Call a meeting to order. As a preliminary matter, this is Donald Davenport, Chair of the Hampton Board of Selectmen. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated to be on the agenda. Our president can hear me. Robert Markle.
Present.
John Flynn.
Present.
Mary Ellen Glover.
Present.
Pam Courtney. Carol Fitzgerald.
Carol's here.
Carol's here, okay. Doug Boyd. Alan Fritz.
Doug is also here.
Okay, she dug. Alan Fritz.
I don't see Alan.
Okay, Dick Patullo.
Dick is here.
Cliff Bombard.
I saw Cliff.
And there Turcot.
I'm here. On the phone.
All right. The good afternoon, the opening of the Hampton Board of Selectmen is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current status, state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the governor's order suspends the requirements of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find personally, is intended materials for this meeting shows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Hampton Board of Selectmen is convening using Zoom video conferencing as opposed to Town's website identifying how the public may join. This obviously is being recorded. I would ask all those who are the public and as members as well to stay muted and to signal Bob by raising your hand or sending a message that you want to speak.
Excuse me, Don. Pam is also checked in, so.
Okay.
Also, also, Don, Paul Gagor Ducci from the advisory is also on.
Okay. Begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance. United States of America. Under God, indivisible, with liberty. Okay, thank you. The first item we have, what I said is, we have the invite, we have meeting, but the advisory committee is with us, so I think we probably should go right to there so they can convene to their meeting. As advisory committee, you probably should unmute all the advisory committee, Bob.
Everyone has been unmuted, and then I've asked them to re-mute themselves until they talk, so. That's why.
Boy, they're bringing them in young now.
So we're here to talk about the budget and the ramifications of revenue shortfalls, probably, or in things happen with the COVID virus. So Carol or Doug, you want to start? How you want to proceed?
Sure, Carol, you want me to take it or you want to do it? I'm not sure if Carol's unmuted or not, but. Let me, let me quickly review where we are. I believe the board received our draft budget. And I would emphasize the fact that it's draft, it's, it's up about $600,000 over the current year. Now that includes the ambulance and includes $100,000 for the tree work. We've had discussions with Cliff and with Dick as well, how we should proceed. From a revenue perspective, the town is in reasonably good shape in that we have the money in the bank for the rest of this year. The budget request for next year, until we know what happens on the state level with local aid, it's pretty tough for us to decide what to recommend with regards to our budget. I think as a group, we're leaning towards deferring to the fall when, after we've had the free cash certified, and we can decide what to apply to what accounts as a way to bring it into, bring it into a reasonable increase. I know the board had talked about a, trying to maintain a 0% on the budget, but clearly that's not going to happen, or 0% on the rate. You know, with a $600,000 increase, there's certainly no way that we're not going to be able to keep the tax rate at the same level. I know there's been discussion of 5% reductions through the various departments. You know, as somebody who's been involved in developing these budgets for a number of years, I would invite anybody at any time to come forward with reduction requests and suggestions. And over the years, we have, we have done that to the point where I think the budget, as it's prepared, is pretty lean. And if anybody can find any savings, we would certainly encourage them to come forward because we've done our best over the years to make it as efficient as possible. Perhaps what would make sense from a contextual perspective is to get an overview from Cliff as to where we stand in the current year with regards to expenditures, as well as collections, and what, if anything, he has by way of guidance going into the next fiscal year.
Well, I think, I think we're in remarkably good condition. Keep in mind that most of our levies were made quite a bit prior to the start of this COVID thing, this 19. And those taxes continued to be collected, and the real estate taxes, while we might not collect all of them, will be collected. There's no way, there's no way out of it. Just because we waived the fees and the penalties doesn't mean that we don't ultimately collect the tax. So I think the fact that this happened so far into the fiscal year, I think revenue-wise, there'd be minimal effect. We might take in fewer fees on late taxes, we might take in some less interest on late taxes, that's true, but by the same token, our motor vehicle exercise taxes were committed during the process of being paid. We're already quite a bit, we're on a par with last year. I'm not concerned about the revenue. With respect to the expenditures now, I have some real concerns about this budget. My concern is, is that not only is it a budget problem for this year, but most of these issues we're ferry, are facing are carryover issues for 2022. We will have the ambulance, we will have the retirement, we'll have the insurance, we'll have more contracts because we're in negotiations. So, yeah, we might be able to mitigate this year, but going on to 2022 is going to be very, very difficult. We will have free cash, I have no doubt about that. Our expenditures are less, for some reason or at this point than they were last year. We may want to review this current budget that we have now, and, I mean, the 2020 budget, and see if there are some items that we could just not spend. Every dollar we save this year is a dollar in free cash that we can use in the fall. That, that, we do this every year, though. This is the problem. We don't seem to be able to get a grip on it. And then in December, when we try to set the tax rate, we're scrambling around to make it reasonable. I'm not saying that we don't have, we don't have the wherewithal to meet this budget. I don't think we have the appetite.
Cliff and Doug, the, there's several drivers of this budget, and Doug mentioned a couple of them, just so folks are aware that it's probably five, five items that are, I think, over $500,000 in the budget. One is the ambulance at 330,000. The other is, there's $100,000 for the additional free removal in this, this budget. 47,000 additional in county retirement. $54,000 in new salary in the fire department, and about 24,000 in insurance increases. So if you add all those up, I, I think I came to like about $550,000. For the, to my point earlier, the rest of the budget, folks are, folks are running lean and mean. They're getting a lot done, and there's not a lot of room in, in most of those budgets. So there's not a lot of place to cut that, that we can say. But the, these are the, the kind of the heavy hitters for this particular year that we're at. And so we can, we can.
I'm sorry, Carol, I agree. It's a lean, it's a lean budget, but it's a mean budget. It's, it's lean and it's mean.
So we can't, so we can't do anything about the retirement. We can't do anything about the healthcare benefits, the insurance, employee benefits. So the two big ones are, the real big ones are the ambulance and the tree. And what if we put off the ambulance and the tree until the fall?
Excellent idea. Could I offer a couple more? If I may? I would suggest taking out the stormwater for 47,500. We have $30,000 in that account now, not spent. Since we have a contract with Ty and Bond going forward, it's a commitment, so I can encumber that money that would certainly carry us through until it's reviewed again in the fall. We probably have some extra money in the town administrator budget, and even leaving some for expenses, probably $20,000 there. We could take 100,000 out of paving, that would give him 150 to at least start work in the early part of the summer. We could take the trees out for 100, put the cruiser for 44 off. That's $3,115, or 300, 300, 3,100, yeah, get me right here, 300.
300.
Or 300,000. So I mean, those are just some ideas. Putting off the ambulance would, all by itself, solve part of the problem. You haven't signed that contract as yet, Don?
No, we have that.
Okay. That would certainly, could I, could I offer this? Got to start thinking around and, I hate the term outside the box, because I think sometimes we just need a bigger box, but any chance of turning that over to an override vote and let the town people vote to see whether they really want this?
Oh, my gosh, it's on.
You mean, you mean a prop two and a half override?
Yes, because we got this going forward for several years, and it'll be a while before we have revenues coming in. So we could test the market, so to speak, to see whether or not the population is willing to pay for this. Unfortunately, the, you know, I thought you had a good idea with the dispatch, but that's been deferred for a while. So this would give you a chance to gauge the temperament for whether the population are willing to, they might want it, but they might not be willing to pay for it.
Left, if I might, would that have to be an override or just a referendum vote? We have enough levy capacity, so we actually need an override?
You're right. It does not have to be an override. However, you're right, yeah. We would not have to have the override vote. It would just be, do you want it or don't you want it?
Right, it'd be just a referendum.
Right.
Whether or not to fund it.
Yeah.
To be a budget item.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Separate article to fund it.
Would it be a matter of a positive town meeting vote and a positive referendum vote before?
I don't think you need a referendum. Well, I guess if he's talking about a referendum, yes. But I thought the discussion, for those who wanted to take this to the town, centered on having a vote at the town meeting, so.
Well, it's going to need that to go forward anyways, one way or the other. That, you know, it might be turned down at town meeting when they see the impact. Now turning, getting it off.
Well, it could be inside the budget, though, and it'd be part of the budget, or you could have it as a separate article, which would spotlight it.
Right, I agree with that. And then, you know, again, I, I keep talking about the fall as if it was this, you know, this great big hole in the ground, we're going to find money. The fall just gives us an opportunity to look back and see what we can do. We will have free cash.
And we should have the state budget at that point.
Absolutely. One of the things that are in the revenue stream is the overlay surplus, which does require the release of the assessors, but there's almost $300,000 in overlay reserve as we speak. And if I may offer one more thing, remember, we have an addition to all this. We have $162,000 in assessments and prior year costs that we have to add to this number that we don't usually add in until we set the tax rate.
Cliff, if I may, some of the things you offered, such as the reduction in the tree warden budget, which I think totals 130, when you add in the traffic control that he was requesting, plus the potential downsizing of the paving in the budget with the look ahead towards the fall. We had discussed that. Potentially moving the cruiser to the fall, although this is the, so to speak, annual cruiser. The one thing about the, the ambulance contract that I believe, I understand your point about the referendum vote at town meeting for funding. I'm cautious about a vote following. The beauty of voting on it, when you hear a budget presentation, is everybody voting, heard the pros and cons, and made up their mind. Whereas the, coming to an election afterwards and voting, they haven't heard the rationale pro and con, so maybe they aren't really giving their best, best opinion of it.
That's true. That's why maybe you make it subject to an override.
Well, or just, or as Bob said, it's just a line item in the budget. And if people raise their hand, turn down that line item, they don't fund it.
Well, I think his idea to make it a special article was a good one.
It could be that.
Guys' hand up.
That may be the best solution is to, you know, isolate that, that issue for consideration at town meeting. And that satisfies both, both the vote to authorize the expenditure, as well as, you know, in a sense, it's a referendum on the ambulance issue, albeit at town meeting, but, you know, it stands alone.
Dick has his hand up.
I would like to, I'd like to reaffirm the point about anything that we can put off to the fall. We are much better informed, is a real good idea. We have a lot better data. We have to reevaluate everything we do in the spring and the fall anyway, the right tax rate. But a couple of things I want to make is, when you're talking about things that we should be doing, not doing or delaying and not delaying, one time expenditures are a lot less of a threat than multi-year commitments, if you will. The department's budget for personnel sake, or the ambulance contract, is a reoccurring commitment into the future. The trees, the $100,000 for the tree, it's kind of a one-time thing, and we're probably either going to pay it this year or we'll pay it over the next couple of years, one way or the other, we're going to be paying it. It doesn't really help us in the long term. Revenue for the town are a lagging indicator of the economy. Our income stays higher even when the economy goes down for a year or two, and then it's slow on the uptick as well. So I would caution you that while I absolutely agree that our current revenues are in fine shape, our cash flow is good, this can sneak up on you if you're not careful, and those reoccurring commitments made now could get us back in the center of the equation that some of us have been doing this long enough, remember when we're closing buildings down and turning off the lights for a year because we got caught short. Thank you.
Don?
Yep.
Don, can I make a comment?
Yeah.
We have an abundance of money in the stabilization account. It is a rainy day fund, and it's raining. If we delay funding the tree, the hazardous and dead tree project until late in the season, it's really going to handicap the work of our tree work. Last year in the fall, as you recall, the town voted 100,000 in addition. This is a serious public safety issue. And clearly, I think that the stabilization fund is available to, to the town if we choose.
I, Bob, I don't disagree that the tree is, is a serious issue. Is if you were, maybe I wasn't clear. If we don't pay that $100,000 this year, we're going to have to do it in the next year or two. It isn't going to be saving us any money long term. Matter of fact, we don't need stabilization to do it. I will remind you that we took $300,000 out of stabilization last year. I promised to try to repay that. We have, we hit our rainy day fund last year because we had about $1 million in new capital expenditure. Well, then we have the other, then we have the other issue of, well, we're on, if we even hold a town meeting on June 15th, or we go to 112 budgets?
Right, Bob, you were looking into the 112 thing. A, are we limited to 112 the entire budget? Or for a line item?
No.
It's not, it's not line item based.
No, it's budget, total budget.
Okay, that makes it easier. Since you have that county retirement bill right at the beginning, and the Quinn bill as well. The other question I had, you talked about the increase in trees. I mean, we're going to leave, I would assume, the standard tree removal part of the budget. We're not taking it to zero, so there is money for tree removal starting at the beginning of the fiscal year. Secondly, I know you talked about $500,000 or $600,000 in additional money in the budget, and it's pretty early to say so. Do we have any kind of like ballpark on new growth to offset that?
Yeah, we do. It's up.
Okay, we'll have to call you back, though.
Okay.
Okay, very good, thank you.
I see Norm.
Yeah, you have to.
Well, I was there, I'm back. I'm back.
Norm, do you have a new growth number for us?
Sure. You ready? Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, good. Well, I know that, you know, Don asked for that. I spoke with Carolyn. And, I mean, without, there's still some things outstanding, but right now, it looks like around 215 to 25 around here.
Police chief has his hand up.
Go ahead. Chief?
The only thing I would suggest that you consider in making your decision on the ambulance is to make sure that you check with AMR, because the current contract we have with them is up July 1, and then we'll, we'll be without a provider totally after that point.
Okay.
Last normal question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Hey, Norm, what does that translate into valuation?
Uh, I think it's 10 million, right?
That adds 10 million in evaluation?
Yeah, I think that's what it was. Right, because it's $20,000. Yeah, it's about 10, it's about 10 million, I think, or close to it.
That certainly helps.
The, just, just a point, but I want to make sure people are aware. It's listed in our draft budget sheet. Now, it emphasized the draft, we're still working on this budget. You'll notice in the debt that we're carrying interest for the dump truck and the radio. That combined debt is about 550,000. Right now, Dick is paying for that on short-term borrow. What's in the budget is only an interest amount of, I don't have it directly in front of me here, it's like $8,000. To address that in the fall and to apply some money to the short-term borrowing to start reducing that debt. You know, the, the amount that we owe, you know, is much more than was reflected in the operating budget.
We have a question from Robin Warner.
Hi. Okay, I just had a couple of comments. I had a question that if the departments did decrease their budgets by 5%, what, what was the vat, what that number would be? And I also wanted to know what the, with the additional firefighter for 54,000? I thought we had three, and I know the town of Wilbraham went after a grant that would pay. I have it right in front of me, actually, that Wilbraham did. They applied and they, they got a grant for the firefighter to help that expense. And also, I was wondering, I mean, we get a cruiser every year, but I don't know how many cruisers are on the road at a time. I'm not sure. Maybe we could forfeit buying a new cruiser if we have, how many do we have now? Four, five? How many are on the road at the same time? Maybe two, two people out? So that was just a suggestion, and I think everybody around the world has had to tighten their belts by 5%. And I think asking the, everybody to look at their budget is a total reasonable as a taxpayer to see what they could come up with, try to save some money. I mean, we've all had to do it. All the companies, we've all been cut, our hours have been cut. I don't think that's an unreasonable request, and I was just wondering what that dollar amount would be and where.
Let me take a stab at that.
Yeah?
The town's current budget is about 14,100,000.
Yeah.
Out of that, about 7, 7,600,000 is for the schools. All right, so that goes off to the schools. That leaves, that leaves the town with about $6.5 million to operate. If you take 5% of $6.5 million, that's 325,000.
Okay.
And as I stated at the outset, if anybody can find those, any savings of any type at any time, we ask people to bring them forward. That suggests that a reduction of, of any amount is going to result in a reduction in services. Matter of, a little bit around the sides. That's already been done.
The whole world has had to do it. I, I was wondering about the firefighter and the cruiser.
Hold on, hold on. So 325,000 is the 5% figure only adds to the town portion of the budget. And if, if anybody who's listening can identify any savings, please come forward with a specific request, because we've been, we've been through the lines. We have done that already.
Right. Well, like, how many? Well, like how many cruisers do we have? Do we need a brand-new cruiser this year? And what's the, the position of the firefighter? Is that a fourth one? I don't know, I thought we had three paid.
Robin, the firefighter salaries, those are additional salaries that we're now paying the officers of the fire department. It's not any additional staff, it's, we weren't paying the officers prior and now they're getting some pay. So it's for, and some of the officers.
Okay.
And we did have a conversation with the chief last week about taking the cruiser off the annual town meeting warrant and pushing it into the fall. And he's reviewing mileage, et cetera, on that.
I think I made, I, I think I made that suggestion and I suggested that he take it off completely.
You made a suggestion to take it off completely. I had made the suggestion not pushing to the fall.
Yeah, so there was no consensus on that.
No, there wasn't.
How many, how many are on the road at a time? How many cruisers are on the road at a time? And then how many are parked?
Well, we had an extensive discussion with the police chief and he said there were six police cruisers. The day that we spoke, he said there were four on the road, but normally there are two, perhaps three.
Okay. Well, maybe a review of the, of the mileage and, I mean, now 100,000 is nothing to put on a vehicle. It, it's just a suggestion, you ask for suggestions? Those are my suggestions. 5% is not unreasonable. Everybody's got to look in their department. This town has been really, really good. Anytime they ask for something, we don't even question it, we just, everybody gets it. But now we're all asking, everybody has to tighten their belts. People will not have their jobs when they get, after their furlough. You may not get your tax money next year because they may have to move. A lot of, I mean, there's foreclosures in town of very, very expensive houses. So it's something that you guys really need to take seriously and I think we all have to suffer just a little bit and get through it.
Don, one more point regarding trees. Senator Lesser's chief of staff sent around a message within the last month asking what kind of earmarks the towns within the district would be interested in. So I submitted for $100,000 for tree removal. I think that's a pipe dream if the state has to live within its own means next year. But in the event that Congress decides to appropriate another tranche of money and to provide support for states and communities, it becomes a bit more realistic. I do know that the Commonwealth has done earmarks for surrounding communities to handle dead trees. So it's there in the event that we are fortunate to get support from the federal government.
Well, if, if 325,000 is 5% and we were saying that we thought 5% was a reasonable amount, we could get 100,000 from paving, 50,000 for the cruiser, 100,000 from, 47,000 from stormwater and 100,000 from the trees and that's 300,000. So, I mean, I think it is doable is the question.
We're talking about a $600,000 increase in the budget request.
I, I realize you have more for that, but you said the 5%, if, if you wanted to do what Robin Warner, Warner said.
Right, well, let's, let's, let's deal with existing budget, not new stuff.
Okay, okay. All those things are still doable. I mean, they still can be cut. I mean, it won't, it won't.
We can defer these things, we can defer some of these things.
Pardon me?
We can defer them.
You could, you can defer them, right. And, and I think we also could, could look at the regional school budget. I mean, we, we don't seem to have much say in that budget, but it's a huge part of our total expenditure.
Well, Carol and I participated in the budget subcommittee meetings for, I don't know, six or seven meetings. An adventure to say that we, we did have an influence in shaping that, as did Maura Ryan was also participating. So, you know, I would, I would beg to differ that we have no influence over that budget.
I didn't say no, I said not a major. And I, and I think that this, I think that the schools, the schools are, I have asked the schools three times to give us a breakdown of what the savings have been because of COVID. Now, there have got to have been savings because it's logical that there would be and I can't get that figure. So I just think that there's not complete transparency of what's going on in the schools.
Okay, let, let's, let's see if we can't come to consensus on, on a few of these items. We're not going to solve anything tonight, let's get to it. One of them is Cliff says he can encumber $38,000, is it Cliff, on the stormwater?
It'll be 30 by the end of the year. We still, yeah, we'll still have to pay tie and bond for June.
So if you encumber 30 and we put 17.5 in there, that covers what they need, right?
Yes, yes, exactly.
So can we all agree that we'll do that?
Can we hear back from Gary Weiner on, if I remember the original stormwater thing, there were various times during the year things had to be done. This had to be completed by June, this had to be by November. He's really on top of that. I think your plan's a good plan if we could just Gary, get Gary to endorse it. But his blessing, he's the one really tracking the, really following through the state, et cetera. Making sure that we haven't shot ourselves in the foot like, oh my gosh, you're going to need that extra 20 and come back with it. And then keep in mind, we need this recommendation for June 1st, which is your projected advisory here, correct?
That's the date that we are, we have penciled in.
Okay, so we have time to hear back from Gary, let him sign up on it as chair of the stormwater committee.
Okay. So Bob, will you follow up on that or, I guess, so, so that someone follows up on it? All right. The, the next, the next thing is the trees, 100,000, do we want to leave it in? Do we have consensus to leave it in or defer it till the fall?
I would propose that we go back to normal funding for the trees, which will leave us around 35,000 and then the fall, which will give us some work to do with the 35, Doug?
About 35 or 37, yeah.
Go to the normal funding and then reassess, but it'll get some work done during the fall. I think Dana's done a great job of getting the high-risk ones done to this point. We can continue with that. Again, as Bob said, maybe the state's coming through with something, I don't know where they're printing it, but maybe they will. And then we can look at it in the fall as well.
Okay. The, the next big one, of course, is the ambulance, 330,000. Do we defer it? Do we do it? Do we forget them?
Well, I think one question, Don, would be if you're deferring it, who's providing ambulance coverage after July 1st?
Exactly.
Right.
So if we had a town meeting in June with that warrant, what?
Yeah, but if you have the town meeting in June and they, and they, and they vote no, then what do you do? How do we provide ambulance service of some sort?
We'll get Joe from the senior center.
So can we agree, just for the purposes of moving on, that we'll leave the ambulance in for now and we'll see what develops in the next couple of weeks, because we might not even have a town meeting in June?
Right.
You know, then we'll have to 112 and then we'll have to decide.
Yeah, I, I think that makes sense, Don.
I can agree with that.
All right, so, so the trees are putting to the fall, the ambulance will leave in for now, the 30, we're going to encumber, see if we can encumber the money for the stormwater, police cruiser.
Well, the chief did say he could go to the fall. The one thing that I was thinking about over the week about going to the fall thing, and this I think speaks to Mary Ellen's point, does it allow us to give a little more time out of the cruisers? For instance, we have that one-year, two-year, one-year thing. If we pick up the annual one in the middle of the fiscal year perhaps, maybe it saves a little time for the next one down the road. And Doug will remember, maybe instead of 1-2, 1-2, we're into 1-1-2, 1-1-2 and gain a little bit.
I'm, I'm thinking back, you know, we, we went to this, this cruiser replacement schedule because we were getting very high repair bills. We're getting just, you know, some major, major mechanical work had to be done. And this was kind of the sweet spot with regards to maximizing the usage of the vehicles. But, I mean, the chief had mentioned that they've changed, you know, the brands of the vehicles and maybe, you know, maybe it's time to revisit the schedule.
Right, and we have, keep in mind, they don't just come off the floor either. We put the order in, it can be two, three, four months. But I think it's a good idea to go ahead, let's schedule it for the fall. If something happens, we do it the fall, we reevaluate then too.
All right. We have a consensus on that?
To remove the cruiser until the fall, right? Is that what you said?
Reconsider at the fall time, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right. So then we have, then we have a couple of smaller items.
What about paving?
Paving?
Oh, paving, okay, paving. Paving 100,000 to the fall? Or, I mean, isn't, isn't, isn't this a chance to do it now? I mean, you know, June, July, August, September?
Well, that's the thing. Go back to, and I know, Don, you're checking MMA all the time. The chapter 90 money is locked in for coming in, that's key, that's, that's the major project that's getting done.
It is, yeah.
As long as that.
Yeah, that comes from a bond, not from the operating, the general fund.
Right. That's key right there. That gives them money to do a project over the summer. Then the extra money may be a smaller-sized project or even one of the same size. If we fund it at 150 plus the money he may have left over in the prior year, 30,000 or 40,000, I think that gives him enough work. And then the money of 100,000 we might replace in the, in the fall would be a spring job, if you will.
Okay, so you're saying change it to 150?
I would see it. Typically, right now, and as Doug said, this isn't exiting granted right now. We're going to get more facts in the next month easily. But this clearly allows us to shape the budget, come down to where we need to be and try and make it, as close to maybe zero-based or close to zero-based in terms of an increase.
Advisory, are you okay with that?
I think, I think it makes sense.
I think they've already done your road, right?
Yeah.
Good job.
And as Cliff, as Cliff knows, they filled that pothole in front of my house.
Hey, Don, I guess, I guess somebody knew somebody to get that.
Now it's just, it's just, it's just swampy now, it's not a lake anymore.
Yeah. Question? I see, I see Claudia and Chet on, don't worry, yours is still on the list, don't worry. Is Norm still on?
Yes.
Norm is still on.
Norm, can I ask you a question?
He's muted, hold on. There you go, more, Norm.
Sure, go ahead.
You know, we have almost $300,000 in overlay surplus. Would the assessors be open to releasing some of that to mitigate some of these costs?
Well, we certainly can discuss it and see what the board thinks. I'd have to check it against the liabilities, outstanding liabilities that we have in, you know, appellate court. I don't think there's very much, I think there's only one. And so, yes, I think absolutely we could release some of that.
Small bills.
Can I say something about the paving, just caution? I'm just, I'm concerned, we had decided, you know, last year or the year before to roll paving back into the budget and not have it be a separate, you know, article or, you know, override vote. And so if we reduced it to 100,000, it really is significantly lower than we had thought about going forward and wanting to be planful about taking care of all the infrastructure needs of the town. So I'm just worried that if it gets down to 100, it's going to be hard to bring it back up again.
150, Karen?
150, I think, yeah.
150, okay. But still, it's significantly lower than the 400,000 that we were working with each year for a while.
And we were talking about rolling. I think there are, over the next few weeks, we're going to see other accounts we can look at. Nobody's mentioned gasoline. Do we need to full them out? We're guessing it's at historically low prices right now. Maybe we don't need to fund it at 65, we can take a drop and fill the tanks, which they usually do anyhow, right when they're low. So things like that, we can maybe find 5,000 here, 10,000 there. And when we come back in June, there might be a way to restore some of that. If we're looking for a number at the end, we can figure out different places to get it from.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not suggesting we shouldn't do this right now, I just, you know, just want to be careful going forward because this is something that rolls over from year to year.
Jim Smith, hand up.
Yeah, first, Carol or Doug, do you, do you have a copy of your draft budget up on your website? I didn't see one there.
It's not posted, Jim.
Okay. I, I agree about the schools, Mary Ellen made a comment earlier and I wanted to jump in. Yeah, I do want to know what kind of savings they've had this year because of their shutdowns. And I think they, you know, they need to be very transparent about that. I think there's a huge potential amount of money there that needs to be looked at in context of the entire budget. Doug or Carol, did they give you any kind of indication of what they're going to be looking for this year in terms of a percentage increase?
Well, we have a, we have a voting number, Jim. And it's, it's about 50,000 less than the current year.
Okay, so that's the Hamden's portion, 60,000 less.
About 50,000 less than, than the current year. The, the actual assessment from the schools, now it includes the, the bonds for the high school and for Green Meadows. If you take those out, the operating budget for the schools is 7,582,138.
But a part of that is, is reallocation of students, right?
No.
None of it's from the reallocation?
None of it.
I mean, the ratio?
Entirely on residents.
Pardon me?
It's, the allocation, the assessments are based entirely upon residents of the students.
That's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying. Oh, the residents of the schools is what you're saying?
Residents of the students, where they live.
Right, right. So isn't that part of that savings?
No.
When, when, when it went down 50,000, didn't it go down because we have fewer students now from Hamden?
Well, we have an overall, we have an overall lower number of students in a, in a smaller percentage than we is.
Right, right. All right.
Comment from Sarah that the school district discussed their savings at, at their May 7th meeting. And it, the savings that are known at this point apparently are available at the, on the website and in Thursday's reminder.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Bob, go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to say that I've also requested twice of the superintendent that he provide us with that information. And when I last talked with him, it wasn't available.
Okay, I had one other comment and it was in the context of talking about the stormwater stuff, but are there, are there state regulations, things that we're doing that are mandated by the state, that the state could waive for a year or two? You know, the, the stormwater issue has been around for years, it's, it's not a, it's not something that absolutely has to be done other than by mandate. And I think that if we're looking for relief, we ought to be looking at what the state mandates are and saying, can you roll back on that until this whole economy situation gets back into focus?
There is a legislative initiative to do just that on the MS4 permit.
And I don't know if there's other things in the budget that would be the, the same way, but I would, I would really look for any kind of mandates that can be reduced or cut back in the short term.
Sounds good.
Doug, if I can go back to your school thing, you mentioned 50,000 less on the operating budget and then it seemed like roughly another 10,000 less on the two bond issue.
Correct.
Green Meadows, so it's 60,000 less. And the school budget is purely based on where the student lives, doesn't matter where they go to school, it's where they, their domicile will.
Correct.
Now, looking forward, Cliff brought up a good point about 2022. Am I right or wrong, Cliff and Dick? I'm pretty sure Green Meadows falls off after this fiscal, upcoming fiscal year, correct? So the following in 22, I don't think we have a Green Meadows plan.
I, I don't remember if it's 21 or 22.
It's pretty close.
180,000.
How much?
About 180,000 a year, it'll be, is the principal payment on that?
Yeah, with 190.
89 this year. So it was big money when we built it, when we did that remodel, it's not big money.
No, but I mean, 200,000 is 200,000. I'm pretty sure I looked up the, the debt projection we have from Eastern, God, 20 years ago, Dick? And it's about, I think it's FY '21 it falls, it finishes. And it's about, I think it's FY '21 it falls, it finishes. So it does free up 200-
I'm pretty sure you're right on that, John.
I think so too.
So, don't go out spending it right now, that's not for cruisers, don't think about that.
All right. A couple of, a couple of smaller items that the advisory committee had talked about was the expense, selectmen's expense. We lowered it by 5,000, it's, we currently put in 20,000, could we lower it more? And my guess is yes, probably about 10,000.
Yeah, I'm just looking at it, Don. The reason that we flagged it was because it was up considerably.
Yeah.
Yeah. A lot of that was the expense in pretty much replacing computers. I don't know that we're done yet. Kind of a broad overview between selectman expense and the IT part. I think I'd asked last week if we'd get a breakdown of the expenditures in the past two fiscal years. Look at going forward, which ones were capital and which ones are ongoing. I think if we have those in our hands, we'll be able to give you a better number. Because, I mean, I think you're right, we need to segregate out the capital costs. You know, okay, we bought seven new computers, but we're not buying them again next year. Versus the ongoing IE, paying for the website, paying for the monthly charge for office for the new, uh, all the, all the people monitoring email.
I'm, I'm talking, John, I'm talking about the, we had, on the other previous town administrator, we put in $25,000 for expenses, the town did. And, and I'm talking about computer equipment or anything like that, you know, just expenses, I think it was for cell phone and things like that, which we don't have that expense now.
Yeah, but some of that was, some of that was one-time charges. Again, we bought a computer which now sits in the town administrator office. I don't think Bob wants a new one. He's happy with what we have, we can take the other. So I think if we get a good line item of what to expend on, you're right now, we can go through and probably parse that down a bit. Rather than just saying, 25, let's take that off, when we don't know, some contractual obligations, workshops, stuff like that.
Okay.
The other, the other small item, Don, is the selectmen's temporary help, which was appropriated at 17,000, and as of December, we hadn't spent any.
Yeah, again-
And I'm wondering if, if that can't be adjusted, or if it's necessary, whatever.
Probably can be, we're fortunate that some of the people, or some of the tasks that were going to be done for that, the people took advantage of the tax write-off program instead. So instead of billing the town against temporary help, and Norm will say, it kind of cost you on the other end, if you will. But going forward, we can look at that. Again, what are the needs? Does Bob want his own secretary? Does he not want his own secretary?
No.
Volunteering, Ted?
Do you still? Do you still have that? And then the other, the other thing is, is around the stormwater. We, we, I, my suggestion, the building department put in, um, extra hours for stormwater. And we could probably reduce that, uh, a little bit, maybe by a couple of hours at each end. And that would save about, uh, eight or $9,000. Because we don't, really don't know how much it's going to be for him to do. You know, we put in six hours, maybe we could reduce it to four or two. And the same thing with clerical. So I have to talk to him about that.
Could I offer, could I offer a couple of things?
Yeah.
And apropos, what we've been talking about, we, uh, expended the full $20,000 in our office equipment acquisition account. We have in our IT account, um, we have about $3,500 still in that. We still have, uh, money in maintenance and office sizable amount of money and office supplies. So actually, um, we've done very well with, actually, information technology has $5,000 left. So, um, we've probably, I don't know what left there might be to buy. We've done quite well in those accounts. Yeah, there are still a couple of, everyone's familiar with Windows 7 going out, and there's still a couple of computers that they haven't been able to get into because of the town hall being closed. That have to change over to Windows 10 because 7 is obsolete. Secondly, and Pam can probably speak to that, if she's still on, is that we have a bill for $1,500 a month basically to handle our, our IT work with the town website, with the town emails, et cetera. And that's, again, we've got two more months of billing to go against for that. But I think what you're saying, Cliff, if I can paraphrase, is maybe the names could be a little clearer, maybe they need to be broken down so it's clear what each account goes for. There's an IT account, that's the website, that's domain, that's the monthly charge to, uh, to Microsoft, basically the Office 365. And maybe put all that together because that's your annual, like Doug said before, not a one-time thing. It's going to be the same every year. And then you have your acquisitions, which will vary from year to year. Maybe you don't need to buy that, maybe that's your one-time thing. So let's look at that. I think a, a good printout of what the past year has been would allow us to give you that type of detail. You know, which was a one-time thing, which is a recurring thing.
I can do that.
Okay.
All right. I mean, uh, so anything else that you want us to bring up?
If you want another little-
Carol, you want it? Go ahead, Mary Ellen.
If you want another little thing, I think that I selectmen's sal- selectmen's salaries, um, I don't think, I'm happy to turn my salary back in, and I think you can cut that line as far as I was concerned. I don't know if other people agree with that. And I thought that, um, there was another one here, I thought, but I'll leave it at that because I can't find the other one right now.
And I don't have to have an interim budget, I can, or interim audit.
Right, we said that before.
For the interim audit, and if that's what we need to do, that's what we need to do.
Right. These are, these are little amounts, but if you, if you attack little amounts, they sometimes add up to a bigger amount. They always add up to a bigger amount.
All right. So Doug and Carol, what, what, what have we agreed on?
Sounds like, um, this number of items that you're going to either reduce or defer to the fall that we'll capture in the, um, in our next round of, of the budget. We'll wait to hear at a few of the last items that we talked about and see if those can be further reduced. But I think that, um, my purpose anyway, I think we hit all the major issues that we were have you addressed tonight, so that's been very helpful, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, everyone. I, I think it was very productive, I thank everyone for their input.
Do we want to schedule a follow-up meeting, or that we'll just play it by ear?
Maybe we'll wait, Mary Ellen, till we see what some of the answers are, and then we can figure out what our next step would be after that.
Okay.
All right.
And right now, we're standing with the June, the June meeting date, or were that still debatable? What, what, Doug?
Now it's still there, but I wouldn't be surprised to see it change.
Wasn't, wasn't the governor supposed to be making a decision about that May 18th date?
He came out today, he came out with today plans. There's, there's a little bit of a four-stage plan he's going through. And he's going to, he's going to rule out the details of that in the coming days. I think by Monday, he'll have details about what that next phase will look like and how people can gather and things like that. So he might get some direction. But we have, we have to work toward that June 1st date in anticipation of the June 15th. So we have to do, get ready for public hearing for the first.
Okay. Oh, and, and one other, one other thing about the, the warrant articles, the stormwater one, Gary's had to take off, that, that's fine, take that out of there. So.
The only other one, Don, I had a question on, if Norm is still there, is the, uh, the two accounts for- Is going to be a wash, is he gone?
Don, if I might just jump in here, I, I spoke with Norm a couple of days ago on that issue, about whether or not to maintain that account, the, the triennial, now it's, I think, on every five year. And Norm was going to discuss it with the other assessors and just get back to us as to whether or not we can sue away with that account.
All right.
It also has the benefit of cleaning up the warrant.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the assessors got plenty of money, they can all find it.
Thank you. Yeah.
Can I add a question to the selectmen and to the, to Bob? You know, um, it's May 11th, actually, May 12th tomorrow. As Carol said, the governor has made some announcement that something's going to come out. Clearly, in two weeks from now, two and a half weeks, it's June 1st. We really legitimately think that we're going to be able to hold a similar or traditional public hearing on this budget in two and a half weeks. I don't think that's going to happen.
I agree.
And then two weeks from that, we would try to hold some kind of a additional town meeting. I don't think that's going to happen. And I think that towns are starting to, I know I have a very good friend that I, that I do some consulting work with, and he's an assistant town moderator, uh, out in the central part of the state. And they've, they had a June 15th meeting scheduled as well for their town meeting, and they've already canceled that. So I'm just wondering, why are we waiting? Why don't, why don't we reschedule and come up with a more workable plan in terms of dates that are actually going to work? And that's all my questions. Because I don't think, I don't think we're going to be opened up in two and a half weeks.
Yeah, Paul, you bring up a good point, because it's not the June 15th date we have to live to, it's the stuff that has to happen by law beforehand, two weeks before the June 1st. Jim Smith is on tonight, he and I were discussing the fact that we have to have the party caucuses on the 14th and 15th of May to meet the deadline required by the June 20th date of the town election. Right now, we're talking about having them outside in the front of Thornton Burgess, people drive up, walk out. But that's the law, 38 days before the election date. We're stuck by that.
So are we, are we stuck to a June 15th town meeting?
We're not stuck to it, but it's not on the agenda tonight. If the chair wants to bring it up and add it, but it really, there's been no prior notice about changing that date.
It just seems to me as though, if, if you're going to have any kind of a town meeting where you want to have the citizens have input, either you're going to have a 100 people on a Zoom meeting, which is not really sustainable kind of way to have a meeting. Or you look at moving the town meeting either to the fall or sometime late summer, where it's probably more applicable, that you're going to be able to have some kind of a town meeting. Because you, we're going to, we'd be wearing masks for awful long time.
The one thing that really lends credibility to that is the fact that we have the answer about the 1/12 budget. And I think it was what you said last week, you felt it was going to be that way. That would be 1/12 of our total budget could be extended on a monthly basis. Now that we're not limited by line item, as Cliff and Dick have both said, we have plenty of money to spend 1/12 of the budget going forward until we hold it, get a budget in place. I think your idea of pushing it to the fall for the whole thing has a lot of merit. Maybe a little earlier, maybe not late October, maybe it's, uh, end of September, early October.
Right, so my only request is, there's the select board and Bob Mark will take a look at, what's a, what's a sustainable schedule that we can put, put everybody on track? So people know, we know, and the, and the, and the town departments can plan. And then the advisory board can meet its obligations to the town. So that's all I'm asking, that's it for me.
All right, thank you. Anything else on the budget?
That's enough for tonight.
All right, we're going to move along.
There you go, thank you, everybody, appreciate your time.
Thank you, guys, enjoy your meeting.
Okay, take care.
Next item on the agenda is the appointment of auxiliary police officers.
Excuse me, Don, we didn't do the minutes. We've got April 6th, April 13th, and April 21st.
All right. April 6th?
Can I just make a point? In the future, can we kick those to the end of the agenda?
Sure.
So we have appointments of, you know, like correspondence. So this is new, I'm looking at, I'm looking at the agenda on the website, do we have extra minutes?
Well, um, the, just, just a comment on the minutes. I think that the purpose of minutes is to foster transparency and to assure accuracy and to be sure that they're, or to try to encourage that they're being used. I think using the Zoom method of, of having meetings, while it's awkward, does increase transparency. And doing Otter, if it worked well, and I haven't heard from Bob, if it did work well, does allow us a transcript to have anybody read for accuracy. So they don't have, they can do the video, or they can do the, the other thing. And then for utilization, I think that we should post the abbreviated minutes, which I would consider to be Pam's minutes, uh, which is just the highlights with a, with an agenda at the bottom that says, you can watch a complete video or transcript of this meeting if you wish, and this is where you find it. And I think that would address our, our minutes problem. Because in reading the minutes, you know, I had several questions and suggestions. And if they were, if there was, if it was, if it was only a, a brief summation, then that would be fine. If it's, if the written minutes are the official minutes, then, you know, whatever. How did you think Otter went, Bob?
Well, I had a conversation with Pam today. It is not ideal. There are a couple of problems with it. One of them is identifying the voices. That's a big one. What you see is Speaker 1, Speaker 2, Speaker 3. That will not work well with the kinds of minutes that we are required to, to provide. The other is, you get a verbatim transcript. And it would take a long time to read that. In fact, it would take, you know, we're looking at a meeting, an hour, hour and a half. And so, uh, the question I posed to Pam, which we didn't answer right away, but I, we're going to continue discussing it. Is it better to do minutes from scratch, watching, uh, the Zoom video, or taking minutes simultaneously with the video? Or is it better to get the full transcription and then cut it down? And, uh, in effect, whittle it down, so that they're, they're good minutes? And, uh, we didn't make it, she didn't make a decision today, but I think that's what's coming, uh, before we make any final decision.
Okay, I think Otter can do voice recognition.
Oh, it does, yeah. It does voice recognition also, yes.
And then it can tell you who the person is. You know, it can say, Speaker 1 is Mary Ellen. And, and I come out, and then it comes out with Mary Ellen's name right there.
Right, yes.
You know, so you don't-
That'll work.
So, do, are you saying, are you ready to approve any of the minutes or not?
I wouldn't sure what the comment had to do with this. I would just wanted to move the minutes to the end of the agenda. If we're taking minutes one by one, I'm, I thought the minutes of April 6th were good.
Um, April 6th, I had just a couple of, a couple of minor suggestions, but they can stay. It's not, they're not major. But, well, one of them was more major than others, but they're not terribly important, probably. It's a question of whether you want real, you know, 100% accuracy, or whether you want it to be almost accurate. But, whatever.
Okay. Perhaps, uh, when the minutes are sent and you folks have a chance to review them, you could send your comments to me or to the, and those changes can be made.
All right. Do we have, do we have a motion to approve the April 6 minutes?
Well, I'm concerned, if Mary Ellen wants them changes, send them along to all of us. I mean, I'm more interested in getting the minutes accurate rather than just obedient. You got to balance it, and she makes a good point, to get them out there. But it's not important to get them out there wrong.
Okay. All right, so we're going to-
If you'd like to forward us suggested edits, we can look at them and then vote on them next week.
Okay. That's fine, we'll do that.
All right.
Move on. Okay, appointment of auxiliary police officers.
You should have had the, you should have the materials that the chief of police sent. And, uh, we have the three, uh, appointments in the meeting tonight.
All right.
Good evening, thank you. These are for the auxiliary police officers positions, and I, I sent down a breakdown of those also. That Mary Ellen asked for, the, the different statuses, so that, that should have been over there at some point too.
Yes, thank you, that was very helpful.
Good, I'm glad. The first applicant to bring forward would be somebody that you're all familiar with. Norm Charette is a, as you're aware, retired lieutenant from Springfield PD. Uh, all the applicants that we're bringing forward tonight are all currently certified. No training issues. They will be operating strictly as an auxiliary officer, so there, there will be virtually no cost to the town to bring them on. Will help us considerably as we move into the detail season. Uh, as we have a, a short list of auxiliary officers, we spend a, an enormous amount of time trying to locate officers to work details, uh, all over the place. So this will speed the process and, um, actually bring some revenue into the town, because every time one of our officers, local officers works a detail, the town recoups a 10% fee for, for them working. So, uh, not only won't it cost us anything, it'll actually save us a little. So, uh, the first, first individual, obviously, Norm Charette, who is a retired Springfield lieutenant. I think you all know him well.
I knew there was a reason for that tie. I knew.
He dressed up for the occasion.
All right. You have any questions of Norm?
No, but I had a question about what you just said. They, they work, they don't get a salary, oh, they're not, they're unpaid workers, which makes them very generous people, I think, but that's number one. But then, number two, what's this 10% fee that we get recoup? What does that mean?
That's the administrative cut, right?
There we go, okay. My computer froze there for a second. Uh, yeah, for, there's a, by law, there's a 10% administrative fee that's returned to the town every time a detail is built.
Oh, so the, the person that's doing the project pays 10% to you of what it costs?
Exactly, goes to a, a special line item.
Got it.
That Cliff maintains.
So they, so they pay the officer, and then 10% of that pay goes to us?
Well, they pay the town. Everything has to go through the town. So the 10% covers all of our costs.
But they don't pay the officer, because he's working for free, right?
No, we pay the officer out of that fee. So whatever we bill, that like National Grid, or the telephone company, or, you know, whoever they're working for, pays the town, we pay the officer and tag the 10%.
I get it.
Be on top of it. So, uh, so there's no allocation of town.
No town money, private money. I understand, I understand.
Exactly.
Thank you. So I move that we appoint Norm Charest, if that seems appropriate.
Well, I want to hear more about Norm's background, his experience.
We already know him.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next one.
Thank you. Next, uh, next candidate we have up is Brendan O'Toole. Brendan is a retired detective lieutenant from the Massachusetts State Police. He worked with, out of the CPAC office for many years. Uh, I've known Brendan personally for many, many years. And likewise, a very well-trained, well-respected officer. Will make a fine addition to the staff.
Subject to the chief's background check, it's our motion. I move that we appoint Brendan O'Toole to position of auxiliary officer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, yeah, thank you. And, uh, last but not least, another individual I've known for many years, Anthony Trangizi, who works with the Environmental Police. Uh, Anthony has, uh, worked alongside him in PD for, Anthony, what, well over 20 years, 25 years? I mean.
28, to be exact, 37, not me.
Who's counting?
It'll work.
I was in, uh, right, right church around Pugh, I was in the right area there. But, um, again, Anthony is, again, has, carries all the certifications necessary. Uh, is very familiar with the community and our officers. And, um, again, will seamlessly make the transition to our auxiliary force. So I would recommend his appointment also.
All right.
Make a motion.
Okay.
Great, Tony. Good friend, known you many years, uh, well, well deserved to have you on staff here. Make a motion to appoint Anthony Trangizi to a position of auxiliary officer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Ladies, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Next item is face mask penalty. That's 15 yards and losses down.
Wow. Wow. You should have the regs on that that were sent to me by the chief.
We do. What's, do we, now, who would, the, the, the police enforce this, or the Board of Health, or?
Board of Health.
And they get a ticket citation?
Jane's on board, maybe she could, Jane, you have any? Nope, she looked pretty happy about that.
And it's, how much does the penalty?
Up to 300.
Laurie.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Pam.
Laurie's on, and she can speak on this.
Laurie?
He was on.
Nice one, Claudia.
It's up to $300.
Yeah.
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 Okay, so.
Go ahead.
Oh, yeah, so, so you're, you go to the village mart, and someone doesn't have a face mask on. And you say to them, put your face mask on. And they say, I ain't got no stink, I don't need no stinking face mask. Right? What happens then?
Uh, Laurie, are you on? Okay. Uh, you asked.
We have a hand raised also.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, in the meantime, we have a hand raised over here.
Go ahead, go ahead.
He's muted.
He's muted himself. I unmuted him. There he is.
Well, we're going to give lines to people that don't wear masks. We should take care of that budget chart. But I don't really think the health department can enforce that. I mean, they can put the entire camping police department, and I'll volunteer as a vigilante along with them, because nobody's wearing face masks. Everybody's kidding themselves.
All right.
Laurie's been to a couple of places and asked people in a very nice way to wear their masks. And they, for the most part, there's always somebody, but for the most part, people won't put them on. And Laurie just has the best way about her and is, can be very convincing in a very nice way. And most people are doing it. If they refuse, you have to have some kind of teeth that you can do something.
But I think about, I'm asking about the efficiency of it. I mean, you're talking about Laurie, she wicked nice, she can say something, but she's in charge of how many towns doing this? How can she be everywhere? Right. So she's over at the Big Y in East, in Wolverhampton, and then she's up to Palmer, and then she's over to Gary's. You can't be everywhere at 12 o'clock when the crowd is, I think, is, you know, the reality is, how can she be everywhere?
Is, is this optional for us?
The chief, what, the chief has a comment?
Chief?
Chief has a comment.
There's a, um, I, I sat in a meeting, uh, last week, um, with the Attorney General, DPH, and the attorney for the Board of Health agents for the state. There's a couple of, a couple of issues with it. The police can enforce it if the board makes a motion to appoint all police officers as Board of Health agents. If the town has, uh, adopted that chapter and section, I just can't find the paper with me now, 2138B, if I'm remembering correctly. Or 3841B. You know, so we have to make sure, if we were going to go that route, that we would, we would go that way. But the Attorney General and the Board of Health Agents Attorney also stated that primarily, it is the business owner's responsibility to make sure that anybody in the business is wearing a mask. And if they don't, they can ask them to leave. And, um, if they don't leave, um, you know, it, it's, it's up to, what they're suggesting is the Board of Health then can take action against the business owner via their license for not complying. It is not something that we, you know, generally, the law is accepted, the governor's order automatically applies. You know, so it's just a, a question of venue and, and how you would want to, um, you know, handle it. And, and, you know, our point was, is if, you know, business owner told somebody to leave for not wearing a mask, and they refused to, and the police came, we're not really worried about them not wearing a mask. At that point, it's either a trespass or disorderly.
Hey, Bob, Bob, Laurie's about to speak. She's the number ending in 5155. Could unmute her? The phone number ending in 5155.
I unmuted her.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Oh, good. Yeah, pretty much what, um, what Jeff was just saying. If the, if the Board of Health appoints the police department as agents of the Board of Health, they can also respond in a civil manner instead of responding criminally. And so it just makes for a regulation to think, in the event that it occurs where somebody is blatantly not, um, not wearing a mask and in lieu of the, the governor's order. But also, um, the order does say that you have to wear a mask if you cannot maintain six-foot distancing, or if you have medical condition. So, um, I've gone, um, been a couple of people that I've spoken to that have medical condition, deviated septum, or whatever the case might be, that makes it difficult for them to wear a mask. Um, if a person does say that they have a medical condition, there's nothing we can do. We don't have to ask them what the condition is, we just have to take their word for it. So it just becomes, it does become difficult. Have had probably, um, in, probably in hand, and maybe a half a dozen phone calls that have come in between myself and Jane, where a resident was complaining that they've been somewhere, and somebody wasn't wearing a mask. And basically, what I've done is just, if I know the person or the business, I'll just call them and let them know, give a little bit of educational background of the importance of it, and try to make it more of an enforcement thing. But yeah, it's like John was saying, it can't be in all places at all times. And, um, you know, so it depends on how the town will go forward enforcing this mask law.
So if we, if we, is there something we, we have to adopt?
No.
No, I think you just have to appoint, it's quite a statute, they just, Board of Health has to appoint the police department. Police officers as an agent of the Board of Health, correct?
Correct. Well, do, do you have to enforce face mask, the wearing of face masks? I think that's the first question. Does the town have a responsibility through the Board of Health or through the policeman to enforce the face mask penalty? A face mask.
The Board of Health, the Board of Health is responsible for enforcement, according to the governor.
Okay.
Laurie, do you have a book of non-criminal citations?
I do not. No, I was never set up on getting tickets.
Well, you're going to be set up on getting tickets? You said?
I never, no, I've never been set up in.
Oh, I've never been, I'm sorry, yeah, okay. Well, that's another issue.
You'll, you'll have a book tomorrow.
Okay. There you go.
What are the other two towns doing, Laurie?
Um, the other towns have talked about this, um, in the past couple of weeks, and they have taken a wait-and-see attitude, and assuming that the residents are going to comply. Everybody wants to keep everybody else safe. Um, and let's see how our residents respond and react to the order before they jump in to do kind of, you know, full enforcement. And starting out, like I said earlier, with just an educational technique to get people used to it, because it's, it's a new way of, of being in public that people just aren't, or people just feel that they're not, they shouldn't be required to. So it's, it's been a week, it'll be a week on Wednesday. So, um, you know, you can, we can always take that kind of wait-and-see attitude. You know, it hasn't, it hasn't gotten to the point where people have totally complained, um, make me. You know, um, but, uh, you know, uh, I'm hoping that it doesn't get to that.
It just seems so inappropriate to have penalties for people not wearing face masks. Well, what we should be, be doing is educating the person and saying, this is the reason you want to wear a face mask, and can we bring you along on this? Rather than saying, well, we're going to find you, or we're going to give you a ticket, or we're going to something, or we're going to have words with you. I think our people are too ni, our, I think most people are, are too nice and too well-meaning, and will go along. I mean, I may be naive, but, um, penalties written by the governor for people that don't abide by the rule he establishes just doesn't seem right to me. And I would like a wait-and-see attitude.
Well, we don't, we don't have to give them a penalty. You make up a good, you bring up a good point. We can give them, so to speak, a warning the first time. I think your point is right. Most people are educated right now with the news why they have to. I don't think we should find them the first time, I agree with you that. But speak to them and say, hey, look, I caught you like this, I'm going to write this down. But if every day I come across you and you're not wearing it, someday, penalty's going to happen. But you're right.
Actually, John, that's, that's part of the governor's order, warning first, first time. Ticket, second offense.
And the ticket amount.
Or even if the business owner wanted to say, you can only come into my business if you have a mask on. That's acceptable. But I think the penalty part, which, which Laurie said was, you know, what they tried to do, I suppose. I don't know.
You hope for reasonableness, but you should check out what happened over the weekend on the Cape. I think Mashpee.
Four Seas.
Out there, was it?
Yeah.
Four Seas Ice Cream Place at the Cape.
What happened?
It was just, I mean, mob control, if you will. He had a great plan, call ahead, whatever, and some people just didn't want to go along. And now the place is in shambles or closed, something like that.
Closed, yeah. It was like a riot, it was awful.
Uh, we have a hand up?
People by themselves are very reasonable, sometimes in a group.
Okay. Is that a hand? Hand up? Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
I would think that, uh, other places would be ahead of us on this issue, as far as the problem goes. You take a situation like, uh, Springfield or a Chickapee Walmart. They must have a situation that's out of hand in a matter of days, and would have to set up hard, fast rules. Has anybody seen anything like that? That would be, uh, you know, they've cut through all the paperwork, and, and we could just follow, uh, an idea such as that, in regards to their hard, fast rules. The warning, and, and then the fine, so we don't have to shake our heads for so long as to how we're going to go about this.
Laurie, Laurie, do you have any, Laurie, any information for other towns?
No, I mean, all the, the, the towns are pretty much under the same, there's no towns that are any stricter with the governor's order. But we're all just in the same boat, like how we want to enforce it. You know, I, I would imagine that the, that, you know, talk to the Chickapee, I spoke to somebody from, the agents from Chickapee last weekend. She said they're, they're busy with responding. Nothing has been uncontrollable, and so, um, you know, I'm not sure how many fines it is actually given, if it's any, at this point. So, um, could find that out. But I think, I, I, I'd agree with Mary Ellen, and, you know, I think for the top standard, for the most part, everybody wants to get back to business at some major part of what the governor's program is ordered to get everything back to work. Is that where you're wearing masks right sometimes? So I think it's going to be, it's going to take getting used to, it's going to take some education, it's just talking to people, and explaining for. So I, as we go along, we can, we shouldn't have an issue with enforcing it.
Laurie, did the governor give any indication of when he would be reviewing this again? Like, this will be in place for a month, and then it will be reviewed, and, or it's going to be in place through the fall? And or it's going to be in place through the fall or all summer? Or did he not give any?
I think, no, just from reading, from reading a little bit online today about his four, four phase of bringing in businesses in his four-phase approach. It appeared that part of that approach would be, you know, moving about safely in the community. I would imagine that that would, part of that would be wearing a mask. I just don't see then maybe mask anytime soon. Actually, as we open up, there's, we can go retail stores, we're going to have contact as people get out of the staying in place. I think that wearing a mask could be around for quite some time, at least in the near future, summer.
All right. I think he'll be wearing face masks for a long time personally. So you want to, so the board, you want to defer for another week? Or you want to take action or take no action? What's your pleasure?
I'd like Jeff to provide Laurie with that book of violation things. Monday is a big day coming forward. Tentatively, the 18th is decision day for the state, or the next decision date. Right, tentatively.
I, I, I think, I think we should just monitor this and see, see how it's working out in other communities and see the, how the, if the governor reopens and how effective that is. And then we can make a decision. I don't think it necessarily has to be next week, but I think we have to have more information.
I heard the, I heard the mayor. I heard the mayor of Boston talking on radio and he said he's going to use heavy persuasion and education. He's not unleashing his police force with tickets. He also complained that there seems to be a generational issue. Those over 30 generally complying, those under 30 not complying.
But I could foresee, if you give someone a ticket for not wearing a face mask, that you're going to irritate that person and you're going to have potential for a more, a more serious incident happening. And I don't see any purpose in engaging in that if you can persuade him in some gentle way. Give him a homemade mask or something, or her.
Yeah, and I think.
So are you saying you feel the police should stop and say something if they see it?
I think in a gentle way, if they see it, say, remember, you have to wear a face mask. Don't forget your face mask. Don't want to see you around town without a face mask, you know. But I mean, not, I wouldn't ticket anybody, I wouldn't put them in jail, I wouldn't give them a disturbing the peace thing. I mean, I think it's, it's out of control.
I think it's always a pocket that they can do it, they don't have to do it.
No, I think it's their, it's their judgment, just like everything else that they, they don't give every speeder a ticket. They give some speeders a ticket, you know, or whatever. So I think it's their judgment.
So we should give them the opportunity to exercise that judgment. Your point is right. Our police officers are smart, community-based people. They're going to know whether or not to do it or not do it. But if they got somebody who just keeps flouting it and flouting it and flouting it, they should have that in their pocket, look buddy, three days in a row, four days in a row, since you're walking to Gary's and people are upset. So either smarten up or there's a ticket in your hand. Because otherwise, he's just thumbing his nose down, saying, I know you're not going to do anything to me. And the people in the store are in danger for that, and that's not fair of them.
And it's not fair that people are wearing masks.
Right, right. So by giving the police department the authority to do it, doesn't mean they have to hit them with a stick every time. But maybe that's a bad thing. Maybe, maybe that's a bad way to say that. It doesn't, you know, they don't have to bring it out every time. They can do as you said, recommend, recommend, until they see it's just not working anymore. And then, look, I let you go for speeding three times, now I got to write you out. And they should have that thing in their back pocket.
Well, well, that makes sense, and that's part of the monitoring, I think, that they would do. So, so you'd want to monitor them. And then if we were, if we were just to do it, I think periodically that the police chief, we would ask him to report back to us, how many of these tickets have you given out? Are you giving out, you know, 10 an hour? Or are you giving out 10 a day, or 10 a week, or 10 a month? You know, so we know if it's a significant problem. And then we should do something more to educate, either, you know, through a video, through something. Because people should comply, people should comply with this out of respect for their neighbors.
And then as Thad says, maybe he gets enough to pay for that cruiser, right Thad?
Right, exactly, exactly.
Two hands up. One is, I don't see the name, it's TMZB.
That's Ted.
Ted Zibert.
Oh, Ted Zibert, okay, I didn't know, yeah, that makes sense.
Actually, actually, that's, actually, that's Nancy Zibert. Because I saw this on the agenda, and I've been following the Boston Globe and their news articles. Yes, give them a warning the first time and take their name. And then, how do you, how do you know if that name is their real name? Because usually teens and early twenties, they'll just, they'll just fool around and give an off-the-wall name. And so if you warned them once, then would that go into like a database for the police departments? So they know when a second time and a third time occurred? I mean, these are legitimate questions, Mary Ellen.
I know they are. It's like, but it's getting bigger.
So then, you give them one warning, and do you give them two warnings? Or do you just say, the next time it's going to be $25 fine? And then the next time it's going to double that and then double that? That's all I have to say.
Okay, another hand up here. Mike Allegrizzi.
Yes, hi. I do believe we need to give the police the power to, to fine in the most extreme situations like that. We have to put some teeth to it. Here and there, we're going to get these people that just may be abusive about it. And our police officers will exercise restraint. We have to give them that ability to write that fine in the most extreme situations. It's serious business. And the governor put that out for a reason, we need to use it.
Thanks, Mike. All right, do I have a motion?
Yeah, go back to what I said, Don, I think we should go on, give them the authority to do it. Have Jeff get that pack of tickets to Laurie tomorrow. And have the police there, so to speak, as backup tour doing that. So I make a motion that we, as Laurie McCool, our health agent suggested, appoint the police as, so to speak, ticketing authority for the governor's order.
Any second?
And Bob can research whatever that has to be in the, in the MGL, etc., and all that.
Any second? Was there a second?
I didn't second, no.
Okay, I'll second it.
I, I think, I think that if we, if we said, have, have it be at the policeman, at the policeman's discretion to do that, that's fine. But to say that we're going to allow them to ticket people is, seems to be one more step to me. I mean, to have the discretion, I think they should have the discretion, you know, if things.
Okay, then maybe I phrase wrong, it's implicit, maybe I phrase wrong, it's implicit that they have that discretion.
Right.
And I think Jeff would speak to that.
They always.
So, so what's the motion again, please, John?
Basically, we're giving them ticketing authority per their training, if you will. They have the discretion to proceed with it.
Then I can second that. I must have misunderstood what you said.
All right. Excuse me, I think there's a problem with that, and that is that the town has not adopted the enabling part of the statute.
Oh, which is the health officers.
Pardon? It's the health department. And in cases where someone is resisting, then the health agent can contact the police to assist with enforcement. But for the police department to directly enforce, the town must have adopted the enabling part of the legislation, which hasn't been done yet.
Right, we're, Board of Health agent is what we're doing, so we don't need to.
Right, you're doing the agent, correct, correct.
Right, but fine then. So motion is to maybe appoint the police as Board of Health agent, stop.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
All right, I want to, all right.
Did you vote, Don?
What?
Did you vote?
Yes.
Oh, okay, I didn't see, I didn't hear you, I'm sorry. Just keep it honest.
It was, it was, we have a, I don't know, is it, we have a thunderstorm over here.
It's pretty bad here, yeah.
Yeah, ambulance, ambulance purchase.
The interim police chief is here.
Fire chief.
I mean, sorry, chief, sorry.
No, no worry, Jeff.
Give your pitch.
Ed has been unmuted.
Excuse me, before you give your pitch, could I ask who authorized looking into this? To the police, to the fire chief? Or did you just do this on your own?
We were, we did this on our own. Someone contacted us and told us that they had an ambulance available. So we, we, you know, proceeded to look at it.
Well, because my concern was that the, the matter was not brought to the Board of Selectmen, and it's an idea that was presented by John at a meeting, maybe a couple of times at a meetings. And, and, but there was really no discussion or consensus that this is a road we wanted to go down, and there was no vote, and there was no timeline. And I think the whole discussion is a little premature. We haven't even decided how we, how we want to go with an ambulance at the fire department, or if we want to go with it, or when we want to go with it.
I don't recall, I don't recall around me presenting anything. This is, I think, in line with what the fire department came to Bob with as their proposal back at the beginning, correct, Bob? That they are looking into a shift-type thing. I don't think it's anything any of our board came up with.
No, but when we were voting for the, when we were voting for the, for the contract, you said, well, we'll do that, and then the fire department can go along on a separate track, or we could discuss it at a later date, or something like that. I think that's how it happened. Because I looked up the minutes and.
This was not connected at all with the discussions that the Selectmen had in January and February and March about having a second basic life support ambulance, maybe. Or what we would, we were calling Phase Two. This has nothing to, this was not connected to that. This was something, as I understand it, that just popped up. And a contact was made of the fire chief and I just sent it over to Ed, or over to Don to see if he wanted to put it on the agenda, which is at the request of the chief.
Okay, so, like Bob said, the situation popped up to the fire department. I felt the obligation to the town to speak it out, investigate it. I did, and I asked to bring this back to the board. Basically, West Hampton Fire Department is getting rid of their BLS ambulance, a 1996 ambulance. They're looking for $2,000 for it. It has 110,000 dollars on it, it comes with a stretcher, a stair chair. And they're, it's a good setup. I think the fire department can pay for the whole thing through accounts that we have that are in our operation budget. And it would be no cost at Townhampton for salaries or anything. We would start with the three full-time positions we have during the day, Monday through Friday. We're not looking to add any more people to staff it. And no cost to the town except for the insurance and registration of the ambulance. And I think it would go a long way to provide service to residents of Hamden.
So how does this fit in with the, if we have Action Ambulance, how would this fit?
Well, if, again, I can't speak for Action Ambulance. This would be a BLS truck that would help to further our station, continue our EMS program, as well as keep our call volume up, which is very important when applying for grants. It helps us obtain the status in that line of grants. It usually goes by your call volume type of calls you have. And it also allows us to keep the current members we have with our EMS paramedic licenses active and be able to practice their skills that they worked so hard to.
So if, if a 91, if an EMS call came in, we would, let's see if I correct. If a 91, if an EMS call comes in now, you guys respond with a fly car, right? And then if the person needs to be transported, that we have to call in an ambulance service? So now we have this ambulance, which can transport, you can transport people to the hospital?
Yes, this is, let me back up a little bit. AMR has been our provider for quite a few years. They have continuously been long waits. This isn't something that happens six months or a year, it's been going on for years. So three years ago, we started manning a fly car. And we did that without any additional expense to the town. We manned that and we made every call for the past three years. The next step would be transportation, to be able to transport the patient. So yes, if we got a call right now and we had an ambulance, yeah, we could go, you know, respond with it and then, you know, transport the patient to the hospital.
We had a call, we had a hand up from Chet.
Yeah, Ed, I've got one question. The life expectancy of a, what, 20-year-old vehicle?
Yep, that, that's a good question. We had a mechanic go out Saturday, I traveled with him. It's in good shape, they've taken very well care of it. But along with this, if we, we were allowed to do this by the board, I would pursue grants and some fundraising to replace it. I think it's a one-to-two-year ambulance. If we could replace it, it would be a great backup to that ambulance. But again, I'm trying to, I can't say it's enough, provide a service to the town with as small a cost as possible.
I, I think it's a, I think it's a great idea. It's not going to cost the town any money, I say, let's do it. What happens when, Ed, you respond and Action responds and the person's in the middle like, your truck, my truck, your truck, my truck, how's that decision made?
Well, I, I think Action really plans on being out of town most of the time to get their all volume in order to get their price down that they guaranteed the town. Though they're still projected, they would like to do 1,000 calls a year. I honestly think there'll be work for a BLS truck. If not, most of the time Easton Meadow is coming to our town now. I'm sure they would appreciate some help as well. I think no matter what, there'll be work for an ambulance from the fire department.
Two more hands up, Jim Smith and Robin Warner.
Okay, Ed, the, if we transport people, is that a revenue stream to the town? And do we have to set up like an enterprise fund for that? And also, there was the question about, you know, the relationship with Action. Would they, how would you resolve those disputes? Has that been thought through?
First of all, there'd be an account set up for, it's not an enterprise fund, but renewable receipts fund. Yes, it's, it would generate a revenue stream. BLS is still obviously a billable service. I don't want to get into, like, we can make X amount of dollars because, again, I'm really focusing on providing a service to the town. All our firefighters. All our firefighters, um, and EMTs join the department to help these townspeople. You're, we are residents, help them out. We want to do this. So, it's not something that we're looking to for revenue stream. Yes, there is, yes, it would help out, especially after here, we'd have some money in account. Um, and that's, you know, that's it was to go forward.
When I was asking about a revenue stream, I wasn't referring to, to a money-making, uh, venture, but more to offset the costs.
Yes, I, I believe the average billable BLS ambulance costs eight hundred dollars at this time.
Uh, Robin Warner has a hand up.
I think Jim had one more question.
Go ahead, Jim. John, John had a question, that's.
Well, I'm all, I'm all set.
This may jump into what Robin was talking about. Ed, would you envision something like, this is in place of mutual aid? Okay, as you said, you're feared that Action's going to be out of town covering a Easton Meadow call. Something comes in, you have this ambulance ready in town, quicker to respond than a potential mutual aid call. And that's the value to the community you're talking about?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, I, I think that, um, we could respond and if, you know, Action wasn't available, be there. Um, and, you know, if, if another town nearby needed us as well, um, it would be available to that one.
But what, would it be available twenty-four-seven?
To start out, I think we should take baby steps and just make it Monday through Friday. The same time, the same hours that the day crew is working now, full-time people, which is eight AM to four PM. Get the kinks out of the program. If they're, you know, make sure it's running perfectly before we turn to a call a, after hours. And before I even did that, I'd want to check with the members of, of the department. Make sure that they supported this, um, they were on board, uh, with that as well.
Another hand up.
Um, no, not a tire, sorry.
If it's, if it's a forty-year-old truck with a hundred thousand miles, that's one thing. But, uh, when you say it's, you know, in the last two years, then two years from now, we'd be looking at wanting to buy a brand-new. I'd rather buy a brand-new ambulance today instead of a cruiser or a fire truck or a snowball. That project went by the wayside a few months ago, my, so I think it's just throwing money bad.
Okay, Robin has one too.
Okay, I just have a couple of questions. Um, we kind of went through this a few months ago. Um, my concern is when, um, when Action has an ambulance, when we have a call, when Action goes out on a call, they do have a backup. That will come, so saying that, and they're going to be located right in Hamden. So, saying that we won't have ambulance service, I mean, they are going to back themselves up in a very timely fashion. I have a concern about having a fire and we need firemen and they're going to be out on a call. I think, um, that's a big concern. That we're a fire department and that that service needs to be covered and that's just as important. And I also have a concern, this ambulance, um, needs to be, there's a lot of expenses that haven't been disclosed. That needs to be, um, outfitted with a specific equipment that needs to be certified. Um, we also, it won't be an ALS call, so we're going to have to have the backup cost for the ALS. Um, the C-Med radio, um, charges, there's a lot, some, and that, those can significantly add up. And then when we have, when it does break down within a year and we're going to have to buy another ambulance, that's, I think, done. Um, Mr. Davenport, you figured it out. It was going to be about five hundred thousand a year. And again, I think it's something that's just going to escalate. We get this and it's just going to snowball and before you know it, we're going to have a million-dollar budget, so.
So, again, um, if I could address Robin a little bit, um, first of all, um, one of your questions was, Action said, actually, we'd have a backup ambulance coming in. They said if they had one in the area, they would head it this way. Um, and we don't also know what's going to happen with Action. They could be here a year, two years, the company could be sold. Um, I'm not trying to go up against Action. I'm just trying to protect the towns, uh, the town resident's best interest of the town. Um, as far as C-Med, the radios, we have all that equipment. We have the equipment to put in the ambulance now. Where, where the state inspections, the OMS inspections, we're, we're, have all that covered. We're not asking for that money from the town at all. But as far as replacement costs, we did ask the town if we could buy an ambulance. They thought a hundred and thirty thousand dollars was too much. This is another alternative. If we could get this in place and write some grants, perhaps, you know, we could purchase a new ambulance without cost to the town. I'm not looking to drive the, the fire department up. I'm looking to help the town.
Well, I, I need to know, how, how are we going to cover the fire department if there's a simultaneous fire? You guys are out of town. I mean, that, that happened recently when there was a fire and there was nobody, they were out of town. And that, and that wasn't even an ambulance.
So, if, if the, um, if two EMTs went out, out on a call, we would have a call back for one more additional firefighter to come in, so the minimum of two firefighters at the station.
I, I share Robin's concern about that the fire department is growing beyond its, its initial intent. When you, when, when we were at the town meeting, um, to approve the fire department, a, a gentleman stood up and told about a fire he had had and and everybody, you know, their heart went out to him and everybody said, oh, yes, we need a fire department. Following that, they said, well, how many firefighters will you need? And he said, three. Okay, we need three firefighters to protect the town against fire. Now those three firefighters are saying, well, we can leave the, the town unprotected completely and go on an ambulance run. It just doesn't see, it seems to me you are just expanding. And one of the concerns that I had expressed before is that that's what happens with departments. Once you start the department, it just grows. And so it will become the size of the police department and, and exponentially it grows. And I think that we've got to guard against that. We have already, we have already resolved this, this question with a contract, with a, with negotiating a contract with a new ambulance company. I think we should wait and see how that works out. Is it as successful as we are optimistic that it will be? Um, and if down the road we find that we should be going a different way, we can review this later. But I certainly don't think the timing is right right now.
I agree. The other, the other cost to the ALS cost, when we have a BLS and they have to transfer, there's another cost involved in that as well. So, I agree, maybe we could document response times, like when the dispatcher gets a call and then when the fly car goes, what's that timeframe? And if we need an ambulance, what's that timeframe between when the ambulance is actually called and they respond? And we could do that for a few months or six months and, or maybe to the fall meeting and then find out, yes, we definitely do need another, you know, backup in town. I mean, I just need more documentation to see if there's really a need for it. And I, I don't believe, I'm not sure how many, we're almost to June first, okay, six months. Um, and I, I wonder how many calls have, met at calls and have we had so far this year and how many have needed an ambulance?
So, what happens, what happens if the town meeting does not, um, wish to fund the, the contract for Action Ambulance? I'm asking this to the board. Um, what position would be in then?
Well, the position we'd be in then is, in our, in our, in our, uh, contract with AMR expired July first, we would be out, we will be out without any real ambulance service.
So, I mean.
Yeah, come July one, you have no ambulance.
We're now reaching a loan for a no-cost ambulance just for insurance, um, that until, if the town says, um, Action, we agreed to pay the three hundred and thirty thousand and the budget passes, then at that time, um, maybe we could address this again. Or approve it until then, I mean, approve this until, um, we're sure that we have ambulance coverage in the long run.
I don't think we're at a point of approving, approving this, this proposal. And I think that you, um, when we asked if we could get a five percent cut in your budget, you said you didn't have any room for cuts. And you suggested that the town go on a town-wide energy audit to save money. Um, and now you're saying, well, yes, we'll be okay. Uh, we can buy, we can spend more money, which we're, we shouldn't be, we, we should be cutting things, but we should spend money to buy an ambulance. And then you will have to have another person come in if that person's on a run for, to the hospital. So you'll have to have another person that you'll have to pay to come in. It just seems to me there were so many unknowns that this is, again, premature.
Mary Ellen, the six, we have six thousand dollars in a fund that is left over from duty officers before the full-time crew, um, took over. That we did, that, um, the duty officers used to do inspections for free. There's six, six thousand dollars there and we also have fifteen hundred dollars in a gift account that people donated to the party.
How much is that a gift?
This money would.
How much is in the gift account?
Fifteen hundred. So this money would be going to the ambulance to pay for inspection, to pay for radios installed, which we have. They don't have to purchase, um, and we have the equipment to go inside. So it would be repairs, the lettering on the truck, the radios to be installed and inspection fees.
But, but just to go back to my previous point, when we said, can you cut five percent? You said, can't cut a penny, but you've just given me seventy-five hundred dollars here that you could have suggested. We're not cutting any of that. That's all just, if, if things really blow up and we have to come up with every penny we can come up with, what would we do? And you had nothing. And now you have money that you can do something else with.
That's not, that's not appropriated money, Mary Ellen. That's two different things he's talking about. Okay?
Well, so we could still say, I can, I can, you can use this. I can underwrite some of these other things and not have to have, put those in the budget.
Mary Ellen, I, Cliff Bombard just told me about this money two days. I didn't know about it.
Okay, one more hand up.
Okay.
Uh, if, if you're talking to me, um, my question to Mary Ellen, you have signed a contract. What are you going to do July one? We have no ambulance service. You haven't come up with an answer yet. He's got an answer. The police, the fire chief has an answer. What is your answer come July one?
I would assume that between now and July, when the contract would be settled, the, the town administrator is working with Action Ambulance to get the contract written up and signed. Um, so I would assume that that would happen.
You, you said earlier in the financial discussion that you would put this off into the fall. You're going to have a few months with no ambulance service if you put this off to the fall. That was discussion earlier in the meeting.
If I may.
Okay, one more question here. We have, uh, this gentleman's been waiting for a while. Go ahead.
Uh, if I may, Cliff Bombard, if you look over the last number of years, most fire departments have morphed into fire rescue, fire medical. Very few fire departments are strictly fire. Medical is a major component of most fire departments. I think that, my personal opinion is, is that, um, the chief has gone out, exercised some initiative. Found something or became aware of something that could work. He talked to me earlier in the week and, um, I reminded him of the money, sir. He probably didn't know because he wasn't the chief at the time. That, yeah, you've got the money to buy it. You've got the money to equip it. You've got the money to get it inspected. You've got the money to get everything on the road. Now, I'm not exactly sure where the concern is. They'll operate it. If they use it, there'll be revenues from it. So there'll be a stream on that side. I agree, we've got to go get the money, but, you know, and if a town member doesn't pay, if a town member doesn't pay AMR or pay Action, guess what? They're going after them. We may not, we may not go after our people who can't pay. So, or who don't have the insurance. Um, I, you know, I'm having a tough time figuring out the reluctance on this. I applaud, I applaud the fire department for wanting to give up their, so to speak, their gift money. And I, from a personal standpoint, I know that people who have spent a hundred dollars, two hundred dollars in a fire department, thank you for coming to my house, things like that. And that's the money they're talking about using as part of the purchase. And thank you for that. We talk about stepping up. I, I think it's a good idea. I think that, uh, it's a failsafe. If this, uh, we don't even know if we're going to have a town meeting, let alone that you're going to be able to sign a contract with Action.
Fund it.
Right? You don't know if the town people are going to vote for it to fund it. Um, when we had the straw poll that, quite frankly, Mary Ellen, you were very, very emphatic on getting a straw poll and all these things. The fire department was the one that got the biggest response for the straw poll. And yet you ignored that and went with Action. So I, I, I'm just, I'm not, I'm not sure the reluctance, uh, to take advantage of an opportunity. They don't come along all the time. Ed, you mentioned, uh, the purchase price, probably, probably some repairs as well. Your ballpark, they get it up in service is what, five, six thousand dollars? They got mechanics working that are in the, the department that could take care of it.
Yes, it's, we're looking at around five, six thousand dollars a rate. But, you know, with the town.
I think the difference in service between what the Action Ambulance will give us and what the town ambulance would give us, or what the fire department ambulance would give us, is significant. Significant. I think the difference between a BLS and an ALS ambulance is significant. I think the certification of the people working on that ambulance is significant. I don't think the fire department can meet any of those standards right now. Okay, they may down the road, but they cannot meet down note, right now. And I think that's why it's premature.
I'm not sure you know that.
I know that. They've said that.
How do you know?
Because I, I sat on the fire committee, on the fire ambulance, on the ambulance committee for several meetings. And I know that's what they said. That's what they said. They didn't have the same certification as the A, as the Action Ambulance people had.
No, that is, we have, we have a lot of people that are on career fire department that are paramedics now. We can't start out at ALS level. We need to start out by state requirements as a BLS. We can't just jump into the ALS level. Not saying we don't have personnel that, um, ha, don't have that certification or experience. Um, and we're very professional at what we do. It's not, I, I, I don't think it's fair to say that about Action against the fire department, your own fire.
I can ask one, can I ask one thing? And this goes back to both Eddie and Cliff, all right? Cliff, is there money available to the fire department that I would call not appropriated funds sufficient to pay for this ambulance? More so. Right now, there's approximately seventy-five hundred dollars available. Fine. So I go back to, and this is a question kind of for Don. The fire department wants to buy something with money that they have for their own. The town is not appropriated. Not to put it in service yet, but to bring this vehicle on and then back to the board, hey, can we put this in a thing? So they want to go out and do this. I don't know that we really have, until they put it in service and that comes back to us. But in terms of them buying this vehicle, if they want to take a flyer on it, they can do that.
Ed, what, what happens if, uh, what happens, you buy the ambulance, you got this two thousand dollar ambulance and, uh, I don't know, something happens, we can't, we decide that they don't, or doesn't want it. What do you do with the ambulance after that?
Well, we'll have a, you know, a fall, but that's, uh, the fire department's choice. I mean, they're taking a bit of a risk on it. But they have an opportunity right now and they're willing to risk their money to do it. And kind of applaud them for looking for a creative way. Their money.
You broke up a little bit, Don, but I.
My, my question was, if you, if you buy the ambulance and, uh, we don't use it, the board says, no, we're happy with Action. We want to just stay that. We don't want to, you know, have a town ambulance. What do you do with the ambulance then?
Um, well, there's a couple of options. We could keep it and we could use it for rehab at our scenes if we had a, a major incident. Or, um, we could sell it as well. Or we could sell it as well.
Well, Ed, didn't you say this would, I mean, you're talking about going up one level of service. You have a fly car level service right now. Wouldn't this vehicle suffice as the fly car if it didn't make ambulance level?
That's a state licensing question. I guess you could use it as a fly car if you didn't put someone in it.
I don't throw that out there. I mean, could it suffice in the fleet in a different role if it didn't make ambulance role?
Yes, I mean, there's several options. I mean, anytime anybody's, you know, subject to hypothermia, ice rescue, you have a place you could get them out of the cold water and, and bring them, warm them up, anything to get them out of element, any kind of rescue.
My other question, where would you house this?
We would house it in, at the fire station. We would move one of our vehicles to allow room for it.
There goes the chief's office.
Want to keep going with citizen comments, Don, or you, or you want?
What, what, what happens with, if you respond with the ambulance, what happens with the fly car?
Well, the fly car would be a backup, so to speak. So if, if, if you had a, a medical call, ambulance went out, there's two people or what at night, the fly car would run at night, or if the ambulance broke down, we would still have a fly car on. So I don't think we should get rid of the fly car. I think it's, if, if something happens at ambulance, always respond either A to a second medical or more backup or help to the scene. But I, I don't think we should get rid of the fly car.
Does, does West Hampton have a timeline when to get rid of this?
They offered it to East Long Meadow. East Long Meadow wanted it. I had, probably saw Meadow first to make sure that they couldn't afford to buy it. But there's like there, I told them to get back to them this.
Okay. Bob, you said there's citizen comment?
There's, there are three that I can see who want to comment or ask questions.
All right.
The last three, Mr. Alagreza.
Hi, Ed. This sounds like a pretty frugal ambulance. And as you said, if we want to get into this service, we can't jump in 100%. There are levels. I think it's a terrific way to, to see if that's would work in town, get our guys accustomed to it and see if it all works out. What type of ambulance body is that? And does that affect the training? I know there's type ones, types two and type threes. Does that affect how they work? And would the training be the same if they go to a more permanent, more expensive ambulance down the road?
This is a type three. The body is a box style.
So it's very large.
It's pretty large. It's, has aluminum, it's aluminum body. It's like a cutaway van type ambulance. It's, it would be average to somewhere like Mar would have.
Okay, so certainly the training wouldn't change.
Correct.
It's, I mean, I'm comparing it to maybe the most small or single wheel type, where there might even be some action between the driver and somebody taking care of someone in the back. If, if that would change things up in the training at all, I, I think it's, it's very sensible. I mean, even if it just works out for a couple of years, we get to find out if it works. It might get us past that first tier of training. And I would be willing to bet that, that old 1996 ambulance is a heck of a lot better than nothing when you're in trouble. We'd get that body moving in the right direction. Thank you.
Okay, we have, it says Craig's iPhone. Craig, I guess.
Hi, guys. Craig Revest. This is directed towards Ed. I've got a couple of questions. First is, I think it's great that you're proactive with this and I'm, I'm in favor of it. I like the idea. Somebody had made a comment about leaving the town unmanned though during a medical call. Currently, if you were to respond, do you respond to medical calls as is for any other action or AMR or whatever?
We respond to all medical calls right now. I would say close to 70, 80% of our call volume from the fire department. So it's a good part of our, of our call volume.
So if you're on a medical call per se and a fire happens to pop up, would your personnel from the scene have to leave? Or would they still be able to stay and assist?
No, once you, you, once you take care on a person, you can not leave that person unless the higher level of care shows up.
So you would have a back, you would have backup at that time in the, in the stations?
Basically, what we do is call one person in to back up the, to that less, there's a minimal of two people.
Okay.
Station and that would come out of a call, our call budget paid would budget at $65,000 a year.
There would be no change in procedure then if you were to have your own manned ambulance as opposed to you responding to a, a medical emergency without an ambulance?
Yeah, you broke up a little bit.
Sorry. So there'd be no change in procedure then if you were to respond to a medical call as is right now without an ambulance? As opposed to responding to a medical call with an ambulance?
Yep. So the only, the only change would be that we would be transporting a person to hospital, whether it's wing, base, aid, person.
Right. So I guess my, my point was that there would be no change in the amount of man hours or personnel in the building currently or?
There's, there's no change.
No. So I think, I think it's, I think it's a great option then. And I think, I think we should go forward with it. But those are my comments. I, that's all I got.
Thanks, Greg. Bob, you said there's one more person. You will move the question.
Okay, I thought Robin wanted to make another comment. She had her hand up.
Do think it's, it's a, it's a good idea. I'm just really concerned about the cost that are going to be incurred. And I would like to know why West Hampton's getting out of the ambulance business and how many call medical, how many calls we've had so far this year?
Who's listening?
Okay, so your first question was the cost, right?
Well, why they're getting out of, why is West Hampton giving up the ambulance service?
Okay.
In their fire department.
I apologize, Rob. You were cut off at the beginning. West Hampton is strictly all volunteer firefighters up there. And what they told me is that everyone has to take an EMT course and pay $1,500. And then once that happens, they get picked up by a larger, or they apply for a career spot somewhere else and they lose those individuals. So they are down to two of the senior members, I believe, that are EMTs now. And they, only a town population of 1,300. So they're looking, they joined with East Hampton and East Hampton is providing their EMS now, East Hampton Fire.
And how, how many calls have we had so far this year? We're almost halfway through.
So far this year, I believe for transports, I, I'm going to say the call volume is like 120. I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, Robin, but.
And were they, were they, they're all considered ALS calls now?
I did not take, I, I don't have that information in front of me. I strictly came to see about purchasing a BLS ambulance. I didn't know we were going to get into, you know, how many calls are ALS, BLS, but.
Well, that's only because we're going, you're going to still have to meet an ALS. Because if you have an ALS call, you're going to have to transport with an ALS ambulance. So there's what, $250 every time?
Yeah.
You do that. So that's another cost. And, and then a new ambulance is going to be.
That, that's a great question. So I'm a taxpayer too. Let's not, let's not forget that. So if we, if we take a, go out and a call and it turns to ALS, we need an ALS intercept. You're, you're correct. It's 200 to 250 to stock and pick up a paramedic somewhere. But also our ambulance turns into ALS ambulance and we get revenue twice as much back. So, yes.
There's a cost involved to upgrade the ambulance to a BLS to ALS with equipment, I believe. Is that true?
So paramedic gets on with his equipment, it turns into ALS.
Right, right. I, I'm just afraid there's a lot of costs that are going to be incurred and that it's going to, it's going to end up costing the town and you'll end up having a million dollar budget in a couple of years. So that's my concern.
That's, that's, that's definitely not my objective. So I'm trying not to make that happen for sure.
Yeah, well, it, it won't be long before we have a new ambulance because I'm not sure how long this one will last. So that's my concern. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
I would, I would just, I would just make a comment about the call volume in that I, I know that all the, all the incidents that I have heard of for ambulance, the police and the fire go. So they both get credit for that call. So when, so, so when we give these numbers, I don't know that they actually relate to individual people. You know, that they're individual calls because that's what, you know, everybody that I've known that had to call for, for medical help said both people have, and this has been maybe 20 people. This is both people have shown up. Both, both departments have shown up. And if one of them takes charge, which is usually the police, because they're the immediate, they can get there quickest. And then it's the fire as a backup. But, so just so people know what those figures mean.
So, okay, so police definitely show up. They're, they're out patrolling. They're, they're on duty. When the fire department shows up, they take over their higher, higher level of care. They have to take over. But if you're referencing the 124 caused a, that number I obtained from AMR a couple of days ago, that's where I got that number for transport. So I don't know.
So that could be higher because that's just AMR. You could have gone, East Long Meadow could have come or Wilbraham or somebody else, right?
Well, the way it works now is if the police department gets a 911 call for medical, they automatically call AMR. I guess we have a mutual aid agreement with them. There's no current contract from what I understand. And they, they either decide if they have two ambulances in Springfield or four ambulances. Depending on how many number of ambulance they have in Springfield or how many they have available, then those one to handle. If they don't expect them out available, they automatically pawn it off to East Long Meadow or Wilbraham, Bunson, or whoever, whoever they keep calling until they find someone. That, that's where our delayed call come from basically. So, I mean, if AMR has one, but it's out the other side of Springfield.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Any, any motion from the board or reference? I still go back to what I said before. They have their own money. If they wish to purchase the ambulance, then come back to the board with a plan to put it in service, I would certainly entertain them coming back with that plan. All right, so. They don't need, they don't need to make a motion for you to spend money out of your pocket, Don. They have their money. And if, Ed, are you looking for more assurance from the board that we would support this going forward? Or are you looking for us, let us do a little research on our own while you do your parallel thing?
Well, I certainly don't want to go waste money on a, maybe hit the, hit the board.
And that, but the board really hasn't had a lot. It's a great proposal, but we've only had a day or two to look at it. That's all. And I think there have been some decent questions raised. If you want to keep moving along without going too far, I'm certainly all favor of that. I think the board has to do a little due diligence. Mary Ellen's raised some good questions, Don, the people in the crowd as well. I think it's a great concept to explore without pushing it off too much farther, but it is pretty new to us. But my personal thing is I would encourage you doing it.
So what I'm hearing is that we'll put any, I, I understand Ed's point. He doesn't want to, he doesn't want to go down the road or something if the board later on says, forget it. On the other hand, we don't seem.
Well, that's what I was trying to, that's what I was trying to say. If it's still accessible as a fly car going forward, he really hasn't done anything other than put a second fly car in service and hasn't really done any harm to the department.
I would, I would point out that there are, maybe not the same year of vehicle that you're looking at, but there are a lot of fire trucks, fly cars, all that stuff on the internet all the time for sale, all the time. My husband happens to have an interest in looking at them. That's how I happen to know. So, I mean, I don't think there's, if this, if you missed out on this opportunity, I don't think you wouldn't find many, many other ones. But some of, some of them are much newer and more expensive, you know, but.
Yeah, this, this particular ambulance does come with a 2017 stretcher, which is roughly $15,000 value and a stair chair in the ambulance. That, that's one more thing, one more item we wouldn't have to buy. I'm not, if we had to go out and purchase a power stretcher, we're looking at probably $15,000 to do that. That was a grant that Tampa Fire received recently and they're willing to gift that to us with the purchase of the, well, and the stair chair. Which is another savings. Obviously, I don't want to extol that money out.
Right. So. So I, I, so I guess, I mean, I, I think Ed's position is he's looking for a more affirmative, affirmative, well, what's the word I want to use? Affirmative.
Support.
Support, you know? Then, then, then I go ahead and do it and we'll let you know later.
Well, go back to exactly, Ed, what are you looking for? You want permission from our board to put an ambulance in service? After you get it up and running. I don't know if it's a month to get it up and running or something like that. But so we would technically, starting July 1st, whatever, have both Action and the fire department running an ambulance service. Yours would be first ship, five days only at this point.
The start, correct?
And you're seeing it technically at no or very low cost because A, you're doing the ship when they're on. And B, there might be a revenue stream coming back. If you had to call somebody in for support, it'd be offset by the fact you'd be filling out at the same time.
Correct. There, there, there's absolutely virtually no cost on except for fuel. And the town always registers, ensures vehicles. That would be the only cost to the town. There would be some revenue stream definitely. That would go towards, if we could put it in a fund, it would go towards a new ambulance or.
Does that make sense?
Okay. Does anyone have a motion or?
I, I'm still trying to craft a motion in my mind, Don, exactly what's being asked for. I guess it's a go ahead from our board, you know, to go ahead and start, but it goes back to, as Mary Ellen said, it's kind of the same proposal we talked about before, except a heck of a lot cheaper. Back then, I think, Ed, you were talking about buying a, in the 100, $140,000 range, you know, for a vehicle.
Yes. Before the price was $130,000. It was $100,000 for the ambulance and $30 for the equipment. Obviously, $20,000 to the $30,000 stretcher. $1,000 was for other, other things.
And go back to Thad's question for what's really the lifetime of this one here. Are we just going to be, okay, we saw how it worked and two years down the road, we're buying a new one? But, but on the other hand, you spent $6,000, got two years out of it. So that's not a bad deal either. And you found out whether or not it worked, if it was a good process. And hate to say it, for $6,000 of money that we're not appropriating, that was money you had already, that was money that was given to the fire. I don't see how it's a lose situation.
I, I think for me, the question is how large do you want the fire department to become? And then the comparison between the, the 130,000, whatever you said, $130,000 fires, truck. truck or transport vehicle to the 2,000 dollar. Clearly, they're not the same, okay? I mean, you don't get the same car when you buy a 2,000 dollar car as when you buy a 50,000 dollar car. So, so we know they're not the same, okay? They both can get the, get where they have to go perhaps, but they're not the same. And how large do you want the fire department to become? Ambulance service is going to have to be 24 hours a day in this town, okay? And this is one step down the road to saying, well, that's the fire department that will be doing, delivering that service. That will be significant money, significant money, okay? If you compare it just to the police department, which is 1.7 million, that is not an odd comparison. So we are talking big butts, not today, not tomorrow, five years from now, somebody will be paying for it. And all of that money will be on their taxes that they pay to this town. I don't think this is the time that we should be even starting down that road. In the fiscal environment that we live in, it's not a lot of money, I know it's not a lot of money. But I just proposed at the advisory committee that the selectmen turn back the, the little money that they get for doing this job. I think little money adds up. And I don't think that we, I'm not committed to this.
I also think, Mary Ellen, to, to, I understand what you're saying, I, I really truly do. And I appreciate your points that you're making. But I also understand that I can't do that on my own, if I were to pay the department, I can't do that on our own. If we were to expend that kind of money or appropriate money, it would definitely have to be at a town meeting. We can't just turn around and create a million and a half dollar budget overnight.
No, you cer- you certainly can't, but you can keep coming back and, 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 you know, hitting people up for that money or, or making proposals for that money. And it's very hard for people to say, no, it really is. And, and to try to be frugal and to try to be responsible. And they want it all, they just don't want to pay it, but they want it all, you know? So, I mean, if you said you could have a 24 hour fire department tomorrow, they'd say, oh, go right ahead. How much did we spend at the, at the last town meeting? What are the projects we put on? People had no idea what that amount of money that they were spending was. And I think that that's important, not that this issue, it, I mean, it's just the start of it. And I'm not faulting you for, for trying to start it reasonably, but it's, it's going down the wrong road, I think.
Well, at this point, this venture costs nothing. It fills a gap that we could possibly have in our service. And I think that's what we're concentrating on now, or what I am concentrating on now. At a department, it's my duty or my obligation to bring this board to help them make these decisions.
Let me ask you this, Ed, because I'm trying to reach some closure here. You submitted a projected, a proposed budget for next fiscal year. If the board agrees to get this, is this going to change your budget for next year?
No.
Mr. Chairman, I move, we accept the fire department's proposal to get the ambulance. It's not going to, he just said it's not going to change his budget for next year, worth, how's it worth?
Any second? Was there a second? I'll second it.
I'm not sure the chair can second.
The motion.
Mr. Danforth, sir, I'm not sure the chair can second motions.
I've always heard the chair can second. I've heard there's been a question about the chair making motions, but never a question about the chair seconding a motion.
Second, yeah, chair can second. The chair, the chair can make a motion and can second, and can second motions.
Just not the same one.
Same one, correct.
Well, great. I do want to say thank you, I know all you worked extra hard.
They haven't voted, Ed, they haven't voted.
They haven't voted yet.
Yeah.
Are all working very hard tonight, though, I do want to throw that out.
I'll repeat your motion, Jeff.
I see a move that we endorse the fire department's plan to purchase, repair, and put in service an ambulance, BLS level, Ed?
Yes.
Correct. For the, sorry, first shift, Monday through Friday only. Had no cost to the town, had no additional cost to the FY '21 budget.
Okay, and I seconded it. Okay, any, any, Kevin, ready for the vote?
I am.
All in favor?
I am, Tom, in favor.
I am.
I'm opposed.
Donald, favorite. Thank you, Ed, thank everybody for the discussion. Next item on the agenda is the minute taking software, but I think we already talked about that.
Right, yes.
Okay, and the A and R proposal for the landfill?
I do not have, I do not have either proposal back at this point.
Town Hall next.
Pardon me?
I have reopening Town Hall next on the agenda online.
Oh, sorry, I'm, yes, I'm sorry, reopen it, Town Hall.
Yes. I think a lot depends on the governor's decision. But the sense I have is that it would be a two-stage process. First, we would prepare the building and provide proper PPEs for the town employees. And then secondly, assuming that works well, and we get the proper protection for our employees, which I think in some offices is going to be an expense of sorts, particularly in the clerk's office, where there are constantly people coming to the counter. You might have some issues in the building department also, with two people in the office. Versus, for example, the administrator's office or Pam's office, where I think we can easily, in effect, put a couple chairs up or whatever and prevent people from coming any closer than six or 10 feet. But once that is established and working satisfactorily, then we could consider stage two, which would be opening the building to the public, certainly under significant regulations in terms of the number of people at one time, requiring the hand sanitizer and so forth. As you know, on Wednesday of this week, we're having the building sanitized with one of these electrostatic machines. And, you know, after that, I'll feel confident at least that the building is free of any virus contamination, at least to start, and it's just a matter of other cautious measures to gradually get back to the new normal. On the 18th, today I listened to the governor's press conference. He's talking four phases. The first phase would be for businesses where you have natural distancing. I guess, you know, golf is the, it's a sport, but golf is an example of that, where people aren't gathered close together. And then secondly, on a limited basis, second stage would be businesses where people are closer together, given that they would take the various precautions that are necessary. And then thirdly, and he didn't give us any timing on this, it's all going to be based on data. Third and fourth, the fourth level, he described as the new normal. It won't be back to normal, it'll be something different than that. So, you know, I think reopening Town Hall is probably going to be the, a, 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 another example of a new normal, once we get there. What I would say is this, there is some money, there's some money in the account for Town Hall. And I would ask the board's permission to evaluate what can be done at the busy offices where people come to the counter. And what kind of barriers would make the most sense and be the least expensive? And then have that, have that done.
I think right now, the only office that really lends itself to a barrier is the town clerk's office and.
Clerk's office, yeah.
Right, and they picked up a four by eight sheet of plastic from my office last week to put a sheet of it there. Cool has suggested at our last meeting to make a station up in the auditorium for people to meet. That basically, they would make an appointment with the building inspector. And he'd be up there at 10 o'clock, maybe a couple tables be there with a barrier in front.
As an alternative to creating conditions in each office, right?
Yeah, some of those offices just don't lend themselves.
No, they don't, no, they don't. Well, you know, if we have to find some staffing for that, I'd have to get that communicated to the public. Probably when they enter the building, they'd be, you know.
We got that temporary help line.
What about, what about the library?
They would be much worse off, and the senior center, same thing. You know, they just can't, you know, those are two buildings that need to have face-to-face interaction. But again, I think, or, let's see what happens Monday. Hate to put it off, but we're waiting for guidance from the state.
Yeah.
I haven't spent any time on this, but in the meantime, I could, I could spend some time finding out what other communities are doing, how they're doing it. I did talk to the department heads last week, no one seemed to have any particular suggestions, other than they want to be safe. Clearly, we have to provide masks, we did talk to the police department, and chief said that he doesn't have a big supply, but can, in a limited way, provide some masks for those who don't have them or who, who will need them. We do have a reasonably good supply at this point of the hand sanitizer. Although I was surprised to hear from Jane that it's not unlimited, that we might run out right after, soon after we, we open the building and significant numbers of people come in. I do notice in the stores that the hand sanitizer is returning to the shelves. Doesn't stay long, doesn't stay long, but production seems to be ramping up on the hand sanitizer.
Good thing we bought that stock. All right. Oh, okay, so A and R proposal.
Whenever they come in, I will get them to you and we'll put them on the agenda.
Okay. Town administrators' report.
Okay, you should have a copy of it, I did make a couple of changes reflecting some things that have happened today, as you know. Town was funded for two community compact grants, one for ClearGov and one for the HR project, total of 24,300 dollars. And these are grants from the Commonwealth. The town does not have any local obligation, no match, no contribution on the part of the town, so. This is good state money that probably is going to be much scarcer in the future. I did send, I did send you copies of the contract, I would ask the board, basically to authorize me to sign these contracts and get this, get this project going, get both projects going.
You have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I've been in touch with both McNamara and Action Ambulance regarding contracts. Both are promising to get them to me soon. The annual report of the town administrator is completed and submitted, I think we're ready to go to press. If, if Pam is still on the meeting?
I, I am still on. And I did send an email, we will have to put a draft warrant and budget into the report. So at whatever point you folks are comfortable with okaying what we have, that needs to be included.
Okay, I did put an ad in for a conservation agent. So far, we have three interested candidates. I did send the resume, I have resumes from two, answered some questions from a third today. The conservation commission members should have copies of the resumes. The deadline for submission is May 20th. So then we'll review our resumes at that point. Steve McDonough, regarding the Amoresco project, there's a Zoom conference tomorrow afternoon at 2 o'clock. There are some new terms in SMART 2, and they're discussing those with state officials. And I think the project is moving, but it's moving slowly, largely because of some uncertainty about SMART 2 and the regulations that are forthcoming. Next week, I have scheduled at least for a presentation on the, a proposal to do a tip project at Allen, East Long Meadow Road, Summers Road, and Wilbraham Road. I did view a webinar on collective bargaining this past week, collective bargaining in the time of COVID-19. I guess, even if we go to 112 budgets, I'm not hearing from anyone that we should sit down and talk, talk to our bargaining groups about their contracts. The municipal vulnerability project, as you know, I sent out information on that. We're going to be looking at a culvert, that is probably the main threat to flooding on North Main Street. Here again, we have a state program where you apply for a grant to do an overall plan for the town. And then following that, the town becomes eligible for funding to address some of the points of vulnerability, when there's bad weather, flooding, whatever, hurricanes and so forth. This is a good program, I've worked with it before. And there's no cost to the town, and the town can use state money to eliminate areas of vulnerability that would damage businesses and residents in severe weather. That's at, that's next Thursday, if members of the board want to, want to come on the walking tour. Mark Langone and I will be there with the engineers.
This Thursday?
This coming Thursday, yes. I'll send you the details on that. We had an emergency management Zoom meeting, as, as you know, just to discuss current conditions and so forth. Nothing came out of that meeting, especially striking or unknown to us. The, the small town administrators had a Zoom meeting, all, everyone's doing Zoom meetings. This was with Sean Cronin of the DOR to discuss all the changes that have been put into the new legislation. Various pieces of legislation that have been coming out of the legislature the last month or so. Also, we did a department heads meeting on May the 6th. Another department heads, I'm sorry, yes?
Yeah, can I interrupt you there? On this small town administrators' meeting, I, I saw that webinar. And the thing that I found interesting in that was on the tax interest, you know, penalties.
Right.
That if the person doesn't pay them by June 29th.
Yes.
They, that doesn't count, they have to pay back the tax.
That's right. That's correct, if you, if you don't cover the taxes themselves by the day before the end of the fiscal year, June 29th, then the, the consideration you got on interest and penalties goes away. Then you got to pay it all. I think as we get towards the middle of June, perhaps we ought to get a message out on the website and maybe even a robocall to residents, just so they understand what the terms are. And we're not establishing the terms, the Commonwealth has established the terms.
Maybe we could, we could get an analysis of how many people are taking advantage of that, and they are. And if it's not a significant number, just send them a letter.
Well, as you know, when you discussed, when you discussed this, one of the items that was not approved was deferring the, the payments for the fourth quarter taxes and the, I think the argument there, and I heard from Cliff about this as well, that a high percentage of residents have their taxes escrowed by their bank. And so, really makes sense to provide some consideration for those who are in need and not to, in effect, allow the banks to hold on to the tax monies for another couple months. That's the report. It was suggested to me that I sign them, so I, I've signed them. Also, I did some work on the website, try and update that. We are posting notice of your meetings on the homepage of the website. And then I post the notice tomorrow that those who want to watch the meeting can do so. And we give them the code for that. And I, my thought is that they will keep this meeting and one prior meeting available on the homepage. And then move the other meetings eventually over to the minutes section of the, of the selectman's webpage. Same policy for the advisory committee. I post their meetings afterward. I'm not leaving them on the front page, I'm going to put them over in the minutes section. That's the report.
And, and one other, one other thing, we got, we got sent, there was some activity on the school litigation suit?
I did see that this afternoon. And I think the long and the short of that is that the town did not prevail, asking for, I think there were six points, oh, and points one and six, I think we did not prevail. In effect, summary dismissal. And so, the case is going to go to trial. Probably in the fall.
But only on certain items, right?
Yes, on certain items. I need to read it more carefully. It came in late this afternoon, I, I just kind of glanced through it. So.
Don, do you think we should have Ed in sometime in the future and give us a recap or?
Yeah, I think we should, I mean, we, it would have to be, I don't know how you do an executive session on one of these things.
Well, just Bob, I would have Bob set up two Zoom meetings and not publish the idea of one of them.
Or we could just not allow participation. I mean, we, we'd have to do, I think you're right, John, we'd have to do two meetings. One would not allow participation, and the other one would. And we'd open up the public meeting and adjourn it and go to the other one.
I think Attorney Pacula would like an executive session on Monday, May 18th, if that's possible. And that will give him a chance to discuss the decision and the orders of the decision and develop a plan for going forward that he can share with the board. The, the trial, the courts are working on, around July 26th is where they're doing their scheduling right now for, for court cases. So it would probably, if, if, the court case would probably come in August or September, you would assume. But so, Monday, Monday, the 18th, maybe, Mr. Marco, you could contact Mr. Pacula.
I can do that, we have agreement that that goes on the agenda.
Yeah.
It'll take me a little while to set that up and figure out.
Yeah.
He has to get a response, somebody by, by the 1st of June, I don't.
Thank you, thank you for reaching out.
Okay.
Else?
No.
Motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
All in favor?
Good night.
Thank you, be safe all.
Thank you.